On the cut is myself, Council Reynolds, Council Tavoris. And tonight, I'd like to-
Wait, wait, I have to, I have to call in. I just have to recess, I have to go, go in and then recess.
She's first on the list, you're not.
She's just gonna call to order and recess.
And then recess, I'm sorry, I, I have to. So now you-
Fair enough. So, so let me recess then?
Yes.
Mr. Recess?
Okay. I'd like to call-
Well, actually, we were out of order, so the meeting never started then.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sarah.
So, I'd like to call to order City Property and Claims Committee at-
Six thirty-two.
Six thirty-two, and I'm immediately going to recess at six thirty-two, coming back later. That's okay, that's it, I'm recessed.
Okay, and now I'll call to Finance Committee to order at six thirty-two then. On the committee is myself, Council Reynolds, Council Tavoris. So, we have a couple guests tonight, and, um, Dev and Mason.
I'm largely gonna defer to Mason.
Okay.
As I showed you earlier, and when I sent the package out to the council. It's the first, it's, I prepared the twenty-four budget, but the Director of Budget and Administration, obviously, the fiscal year-end informs a lot of decisions for the future. And the balance sheet came out last week, and there's some significant numbers they, we definitely do last year together, because Mason was relatively new at the time, and transitional into the position. And I think it's his this year, so I'm as interested to see how he lays this out for all you folks as, as you are. And I'm here if needed, but I'm, I'm sure you're in very capable hands.
Outstanding, so welcome, Mason, and let's talk about the certified free cash.
Well, thank you, yeah, so free cash was certified, I believe, last Wednesday, might have been Thursday. So, this is obviously on relatively short notice, and so we're trying to, you know, try to put as much information as possible as I could for you in that time. To give a big picture of kind of what is within free cash and retained earnings, and kind of where we're headed. And then, obviously, any follow-up questions, happy to, happy to provide any materials, answer any questions offline, and then, if, you know, if I'm needed back, I understand, I'm obviously headed out on, on leaving a little bit here. But if I can participate virtually or some other form, I'm happy to do so. So, big picture, I think it's important to, just for the council as well as the public, to kind of just hit on what free cash retained earnings are first. So, just to start, this was the actual certified amounts of free cash and water and wastewater retained earnings as of last week. So, just for, for reference, none of those are the highest in history. And, I mean, free cash, I think this is our second highest certification on record, but certainly not when it comes to water and wastewater retained earnings. So, just in general, free cash, it's the unrestricted fund balance of municipalities available, of a municipality which is available for appropriation by the legislative body. This is certified annually, usually in the fall, by the Department of Revenue. So, this is a pretty typical timeline for us, right around October, November. So, free cash consists of largely three things, surplus revenues. So, basically, funds that are, revenues that are over our estimates, which we budgeted based off of. Unspent appropriations are what a lot of folks would call a turnback. As well as, you know, funds received that are not necessarily anticipated during the budgeting process. This is a little bit more rare, but we do have some revenues where we might budget zero, so we're technically budgeting it. But they're sort of unanticipated revenues. So, just high-level recommended uses for free cash. These aren't necessarily in a particular order, except I would say that the two priorities are the top two. I would say the, the bottom two, like, they're in somewhat of an order, but I would say the top two are sort of an equal, equal playing field there. So, one, really being building reserves. So, stabilization accounts or other reserve funds, you know, ensuring that we have liquidity for future needs, especially unanticipated expenses. Funding capital projects, these are, you know, one-time infrastructure improvements, equipment purchases, other long-term investments. This is a really, really strong use for retained earnings, because, you know, on paper, these are one-time funds, one-time revenues. Covering one-time expenses, so as these are one-time revenues, paying for non-recurring expenses is preferred over supplementing recurring expenses. And then, you know, sort of below that, supplementing the operating budget. Unexpected or revenue shortfalls in the current budget. Or if we run into a situation where we have unanticipated shortfalls in a future-year budget, you can potentially use free cash for that as well. And then, as well, reducing the tax rate or applying free cash, free cash to lower the property tax levy for residents. That's sort of what I would consider the lowest use of free cash. It's, you can kind of run into issues with that later, so definitely not recommend. In general, free cash is a one-time resource and should sort of be used cautiously with focus on non-recurring one-time expenses. So, sort of the importance of free cash is high level, is, really, it's about financial stability. It also is a direct impact on our, our credit rating, so this is, so rating agencies consider free cash actually as almost like a level of reserve, so available liquid funds. So, that's a direct factor when they assess our credit rating, which, you know, something we can talk about more, and I'm sure the City Treasurer can weigh in on some of our recent, recent ratings calls. And then additionally, budget flexibility, so we can address unforeseen expenses and, you know, not have to make drastic cuts or tax increases. I think what we've seen in the Commonwealth in the past year is a lot of communities in a place where they're needing to do significant tax increases and, and asking the public for overrides, a lot of those failing. And that's, you know, if you don't have substantial reserves or you don't sort of cut back on operating expenses, that's when you run into situations where you just don't have the flexibility to, to, you know, fund your, your operating costs. One big thing is, a lot of municipalities do adopt sort of formal policies targeting a minimum free cash balance. So, so sort of baked into their operating financial policies is, is trying to aim to have three to five percent of their annual budget in a free cash certification. So, just as, we don't have a formalized policy, but it's something certainly to consider. And something I, you know, I think it provides a different framework when we look at our free cash history as compared to our general funded revenues. So, this is sort of a history, a ten-year look back on certified free cash. So, what you'll see is at the bottom, the FY twenty-five. Again, that's the most recent free cash, it is for use during FY twenty-five. So, formatting looks a little weird on PowerPoint, I'm not sure why it looks like that, but the, this sort of gives you a different perspective into what our historical free cash has been the last five years. And then also, looking at that as a percentage of prior-year general fund revenues. So, a lot of, a lot of those sort of free cash targets and policies are centered around comparison to your prior-year revenues or your current-year operating expenses. That's because if you have a significant shortfall in revenues, that's the place, you know, free cash or, or other reserves is the place to go for it. So, it's sort of a good, good way to kind of normalize what you're looking at. So, I, you know, obviously, for a significant number of years, the, the city was more accustomed to a number between three and four million. And since, you know, FY twenty, since the pandemic, we sort of had a windfall of, of larger free cash certifications. And, you know, even when you look at it as sort of a percentage of general fund, you can see it's significantly higher. And we're, we're sort of above some of those communities' target of the three to five percent. But I think there's really good reason for that. You know, considering that, you know, we did have over thirty million dollars in, in sort of influx of federal funds over the last few years, directly in response to the pandemic, and, you know, one of the things we talked about in the budget was that, you know, the focus really has been spending down those funds and, you know, trying our best to minimize the use of, you know, free cash and other, you know, residential, residential revenues, and instead, you know, trying to spend down every dollar we can possible from the feds and try to turn back as little as possible. So, the windfall is that ultimately there's expenses we would have been covering with available free cash and other, other funds that we were covering on available grants, federal ARPA dollars, ESSER funds, Bristol County ARPA, CVRF funds, you know, over, over thirty million dollars of which. So, the color here is kind of tough on the screen, but I wanted to try to give a breakdown of really what's in the certified free cash for FY twenty-five. So, of these, these seven items, they equate to over ninety-nine percent of really what that free cash number is. So, primarily, you know, we talked about this at the budget, that again, the focus was using ARPA funds, so there was gonna be a much more significant-than-usual unused free cash from the prior year. That is the case here, we've never had that high of a, sort of, we've never had two, over two mil, I think over two million actually, in unused free cash at the end of a fiscal year, so it's certainly a significant, significant factor in this. Over twenty-one percent of that, of that twelve-point-eight million is, is realistically from prior-year free cash. Additionally, turnbacks, right, so we talked about the categories, they, really, these are kind of the fundamental categories of free cash, turnback being a big one. So, the, this category right here, general fund, non-school turnbacks, I specifically excluded state and county chargers, because I think, in fairness to the departments in the city, you probably want to see what's the, what's the percentage? What's the amount that really the departments in the city outside the school department are turning back? So, that amounts to just over two point, just under two-point-two million, that's about seventeen percent of that two, twelve-point-eight. And then additionally, the general fund, school turnbacks, so this is, this one-point-three-eight-three million is the return from the school that was not held in a reserve. So, you might remember from, if you read the auditor's free cash submission, you would have seen, it was called out there that the school, because they ultimately spent less than net school spending, we had, we held a reserve on a books, a reserve for expense, which immediately went back to the schools, and I think that was about nine-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, right around that number. So, between those two numbers, you're looking at, you know, two, really, almost two-point-four million in turnback from the schools, but some of that's already been reserved and directly available to the schools already. So, the balance of that number is the one-point-three-eight-three million, of which, I believe, one-point-three-seven-seven is actually net school spending eligible, so as folks might remember, that this, historically and consistent with the mayor's commitment, those net school spending turnbacks, we always reappropriate back to the school upon free cash certification. So, we will be coming with that request, so right off the top of that twelve-point-eight, you're gonna, you know, you're just a sort of an immediate reduction of about one-point-three-seven-seven, right back to the schools. Obviously, a really large factor this year is investment income. This is something that the city's never seen, this level of investment income before, so almost one-point-nine million dollars in investment income. That's a direct result of rising interest rates. Additionally, significant funds on hand related to, to federal grants, ARPA funds, ESSER funds, Bristol County ARPA, and the high school project. So, a lot of those, again, those funds are going out the door, the high school project's winding down. The actual available balance on hand of sort of cash to earn interest income on is declining. So, and as well as, as rates decrease, that investment income should go back down. But that is a significant portion of the free cash certification this year. And it's, it's really, it's really a big number to call out, because that's not something that the city really has ever experienced, and that's definitely, when we talk about like unanticipated, like, I would say that's a relatively unanticipated. The actual free cash amount isn't necessarily unanticipated to me, I think we kind of laid out that we were expecting significant free cash consistent with last year, because of the fact that the priority was on those ARPA funds, but that number was definitely, definitely unanticipated. Additionally, then the remainder, outside of investment income, are the other local receipts, go ahead.
If you could, before we move on from the investment income, can you briefly mention how that impacts net school spending and why? Talk a little bit about that?
Sure, do you mind, I do have it in the presentation, do you mind if-
If we go into it, you get to it.
Yeah, because it does fit into some of the other, other conversation around certain locals, so. Another big factor is surplus local receipts, you know, so as the, as the auditor said before we started, you know, the twenty-four budget was using the auditor's estimates, and was largely a carryover from the prior year, which is a good conservative practice. That was, they were, those estimates were relatively low, and, and our, our revenues came in pretty high comparatively. I will note that in twenty-four, we made significant increases to our local receipts in terms of budgeted amounts. That, you know, does sort of diminish the, the, that large number, right? We shouldn't see that level of, you know, sort of surplus local receipts that we're seeing, that we saw from, from last year.
In twenty-four for the twenty-five budget?
Correct, sorry, in twenty-four, yes, yes, in the twenty-five budget, the local receipts went from about fifteen-and-a-half million to over seventeen-point-one. So, a significant increase in, in sort of balancing our expenses, we did push up our local receipts a lot. And then, there's one other category, this is what I was talking about when we said, the third here, sorry, the unexpected additional revenues. One revenue that we're really not able to necessarily budget is non-recurring local receipts. This is, you know, these are sort of unanticipated, these, this hundred-and-thirty thousand, I believe, was entirely made up from rebates for energy efficiency upgrades. So, something that's, again, not something we're gonna be able to budget, one-time, non-recurring revenues. And even something like that, the state wouldn't really let us push that through as a recurring, because it's really not. So, again, going, so I'm gonna try to hit on these like one by one. But looking back at unappropriated free cash at year-end, you can kind of see, if we do a ten-year look back, you can really see the impacts immediately from the pandemic and how that's sort of falling into our free cash. So, starting in, in fiscal year twenty-twenty, the, into the twenty-twenty-one certification, we had sort of a record unappropriated free cash. We were, there were years where, as you see in twenty-eighteen, we literally appropriated every single dollar of free cash that, that was certified. Other years where we're talking four or five thousand dollars. So, there's definitely a windfall effect. Basically, any free cash that you don't spend from the year before, you know, net of other things that you're sort of dinged against, their liabilities, those fall into your next-year number. So, you're kind of seeing over the last five years, you know, consistently high unused free cash at the end of the year. And there's strategy in that, right, when you talk about, we talked about the target. You know, a lot of people, a lot of municipalities will do sort of an internal holdback on free cash to try to buffer their next-year free cash. That's something, you know, we always, we look at as well. It may not be formalized, but, but sort of a, hey, we don't, we don't want to get to a place where we're, you know, going from a twelve-point-three-million-dollar free cash, sort of twelve-point-eight, sorry, down to only one million at the end of the year, right? We wanna, we wanna try to buffer our next year as well, when possible. So, again, just sort of the big discussion, the influx of federal funds, these are sort of four primary funding sources that came into the city since the pandemic, over thirty million dollars. So, that's something I don't think, I imagine the city's never seen before. I, given the current- I, given the, uh, current debt situation at the federal level, I can't imagine we're going to see something like that again. But, you know, again, a lot of what we're talking about is sort of a windfall effect from, from these available funds. So this is, you know, in that second category, this is sort of the turnbacks. So the overall general fund turnback was about 2.5%. Included in that number is the state and county charges. If you exclude that number, uh, we're looking at just over 3 million. So state and county charges and assessments, uh, we just had the recent updates based on the cherry sheet numbers. Those are given to us by the state. Those are numbers that we have to budget revenues for. And those expenses may not actually come in the way the state set them out when they put the cherry sheets. So that's something where, you know, 900,000 of our, of our free cash number is, is from, you know, rece-, from expenses we had to budget and then ultimately didn't incur, uh, related to sort of those numbers that the state provides. So that's a significant number right there. That's very unusual. The last two years is really the first, first time we've seen, um, such a gap in their estimates and the actuals. And we've actually had years in the past where the estimates are lower than the actuals. So this is very, this is very irregular. Then the education turnback, as discussed, there's the, the 1.383 million and then the additional 969,000 that was held as a reservation fund balance. So, you know, with those two combined, the school department's turnback was relatively similar to the general fund, about 2.4, 2.5%. Again, of that 1.383 million, 1.377 is the net school spending eligible turnback. So that's consistent with that commitment. We'll be looking to appropriate that back to the schools. So we'll be coming to you to ask for that soon. And I think just another important piece to hit on, and, you know, the s- school department and the administration, we've talked about this a lot, is the school department was funding a significant operating expense on ESSER funds. So they received about 9.8 million in ESSER funds, um, in between the three different, the three different ESERS. There's like ESSER 1, ESSER 2, ESSER 3. And this school department was doing about 2.2 million annually in operating expenses utilizing ESSER. Those funds were really set to be obligated and expire in September. So one of the directives in, in conversation with the school department last year was, spend down every dollar you can, shift as much of your operating expenses you can over there. We understand that the windfall will be a significant turnback. We're not going to hold that against the school department. We want to use every single dollar possible. And that's sort of the net effect here. Last year, their turnback was, was 400,000. So significantly different number, um, which is contributing to that overall number. So this is, uh, actually the state and county charges. So I was just talking about how sort of this is, this is a very un-, irregular, uh, year, the last two years really, where the state numbers have just been so off from the, like their estimates that were required to, to hold as, or required to budget revenues for. Their numbers have just been really far off. So this year is about, off by about 15 and a half percent. So it's something we, I remember at one point, I think we talked to the state and tried to see if there was adjustments we could do for it. And again, it's something that they were like, you can't really do that. So we're kind of stuck with their numbers and, and if they, sometimes they do come in higher, right? There's years where you see the turnback was actually negative. So the actual expense was higher than the budgeted. But the last two years have been significant. So speaking more on the investment income, it's kind of interesting if you overlay the city's actual investment income over the fed, with the fed funds rate over it. So fed funds rate being sort of the, the federal interest rates. You can kind of see a, a pretty strong relationship between the fed funds rate and the amount of investment income we bring into the city. To be clear, the city's not allowed, and this is more of Laura's wheelhouse, but the city's not allowed to invest in like treasuries, for example. That's sort of the easy way to compare them, but, um, that's actually, I think, something we're not allowed to do. But you can still look at the, kind of the relationship here. We kind of follow the, the economic, uh, cycle in terms of investment income. And last year was, obviously, we've never seen something like that the last two years. So I think investment, uh, or fed funds rate was about 5% over the last year and, and the result was about 2 million in, uh, investment income. And just another piece, as you see the budget investment income, years ago, we, we fluctuated pretty heavily. And there's years where, you know, the actual, the actual investment income was lower than the budgeted investment income. We aim to be as conservative as possible when budgeting our receipts because that's not a situation we want to be in where our actuals come in lower. We prefer the actuals to come in higher. And investment income is something that's relatively sporadic and as, and the interest rate environment we're in right now where rates are being raised and cut, um, seems like faster than ever. It's not something that I would advise the city to make a significant adjustment for and anticipate that kind of interest income in the future. And the other reason for that, Councilor Cobus already sort of alluded to it, um, kind of comes here. So this is actually, uh, these are the, the, I, what I put on here was the estimated receipts from '24 and the actual receipts. And sort of the surplus or deficit in those receipts, um, represented as a percentage. And then I also wanted to overlay what the estimates were for 2025 that were used in the 2025, 2025 budget for comparison purposes. You'll notice some of those rows are highlighted in blue. That's very specific. So there is what's called the municipal revenue growth factor. And the Department of Revenue, uh, specifically calls out those revenue sources when determining the municipal revenue growth factor, which has a direct impact on the amount of state aid we get for education. So when we talk about, you know, being conservative, pushing up local receipts, pushing down local receipts, being conservative in our local receipts, we're very much incentivized to be as conservative as possible in those, those categories that are highlighted in blue. And I'll kind of break down, what I'll do is I'll break down why and just talk about what that means for chapter 70 and for school funds, but I just wanted to hit on that first. So the biggest category, again, investment income, you know, the overall surplus in local receipts was just over 5 and a half million, almost 2 million of which was the investment income. Some other places where we had sort of significant surplus, Medicaid reimbursement, this continues to be something that's been really, really high. And also we, you might remember, we do have a Medicaid sharing agreement with the schools. So the result of the Medicaid reimbursement, we do actually like sort of share those revenues as something where we'll appropriate, um, based on that agreement. We don't have the number for that yet, but I think last year it was about 360,000. So when those revenues come in, that's something that, you know, it's not just a, a direct benefit to, you know, general government, it's benefit to the school as well. And we sort of always honor that agreement. And so there we go. So the auditor just handed me an estimate.
That's a good estimate.
Okay. So just handed me a good estimate, which is higher than previous years, um, at about 487,000. So that's actually going to be an additional appropriation request of the free cash. So we talked about the 1.37 coming off the top, add another 487,000 coming off the top. Another category, motor vehicle excise. So again, about a 10% surplus there, but you'll notice we did push up the revenue, the anticipated revenues in 2025. So a significant number of these, we did push up the anticipated revenues for in 2025, resulting in, you know, a nearly $1.5 million higher estimated local receipts in '25 than in '24. But we're also kind of targeted on where we push those receipts up. So other charges for services, um, specifically is a category where that doesn't get held against us in terms of municipal revenue growth factor. So we've obviously had significant revenues related to ambulance billing and that's sort of reflected in those estimated receipts there. So, um, we do make adjustments on these, but again, with local receipts, we, we really try to do a five, 10-year look back every single year. And again, we're always going to err on the side of being conservative, being cautious. Because what happens is if we, if we fall short of these, those, we have to make up those revenues. So again, expanding into this municipal revenue growth factor idea, I think this is something that, I don't know if years ago it was kind of discussed, but I'm not sure how much, um, you know, my offices kind of explained this before, so I think it's really valuable. The, the MRGF is an evaluation of budgeted, budgeted growth in revenues and specifically growth in budgeted revenues, not actuals. So the Department of Revenue and DESI, they determined, they use the MRGF to basically determine the city's capacity to self-fund the school department and self-fund net school spending rather than the state picking up the cost. So what, what that, like, what it really entails is sort of the increases in the tax levy, so 2 and a half percent and new growth. And specifically DOR's estimate for new growth, not our estimate. So that's an important distinction. Their estimate actually came really close to what our final number was, but it's just an important distinction. Unrestricted general government aid, which is kind of known as UGA. And then those specific budgeted local receipts that are highlighted in blue. So there's sort of a very basic calculation that they do where they take your prior year levy, levy limit, they take your, your prior year UGA, your prior year budgeted local receipts in those categories highlighted in blue, which for us last year was 8.173. And they determine what your base revenues are. Then they basically take the growth that's estimated, so the 2 and a half percent, the new growth that they've estimated, again, very close to our actual final, the increase in the unrestricted general government aid that's in, at the time, I believe it's the governor's budget, which ultimately was about the number in the final budget. Our budgeted local receipts from last year, so from the prior year, and then they estimate, that's sort of the estimated current revenue and the delta between those two is what they consider the revenue growth. As a percentage, they come to municipal revenue growth factor. This is actually, was actually a relatively high year for us, 4.33%. So they essentially determined that our revenue growth was 4.33% or that we have the capacity to at least take on an additional 4.33% of education funding. So if we push, in, in, in short, if we push those revenues in blue too high, we ultimately get dinged on the state aid. It doesn't change the required contribution for the schools, right? The, the state sets a foundation budget, they say what net school spending is, and they sort of back into the state aid by, um, by determining our local contribution, which is the prior year's required local plus the growth factor, which is literally for, like, they take the actual 4.33% of your prior year, so literally like 1.0433 or whatever your growth factor is. And then they determine a target. So usually if you're, they set a target for the state, uh, for your share of the contribution. If you're off by so many points, they add a percentage. If you're off by so many more points, they add another percentage. So they usually add one or 2%. It depends on kind of where you fall. We traditionally fall in the category where the city has to add an additional 1% to its contribution. And that's how they determine the local contribution. And it, it's actually like a relatively straightforward calculation. It sounds like kind of convoluted and, and I mean, it really is, but the, the baseline is, is they use your prior year, they add your estimated increase and they say, hey, that's how much you can afford to fund the schools now. And that doesn't, again, that doesn't change the foundation budget for the schools. They determine the cost of educating a student and they basically say, hey, your enrollment is 6,313. Here's the cost for these students, here's the cost for these students, here's your total foundation budget. But then they deduct that local contribution and say, okay, the rest is chapter 78. So the reason that's super important is if we aren't careful about how we look to increase these revenues, we ultimately just hurt ourselves in the long run where we're going to take a larger responsibility of the funding, uh, funding source for the schools rather than the state picking it up. So we've definitely benefited from the Student Opportunity Act, um, which made updates to this formula and that's where this is baked in. And we've seen a significant benefit out of, over that in the last few years. But it's also something like, again, everything we do sort of is intentional, right? So when we're looking at these local receipts, we're very intentional on where we are ultra-conservative and where maybe we're just kind of regular conservative, if that makes sense. So it's a very targeted approach.
Councilor Dolan.
Thank you. Can you go back to that last slide, please?
Sure.
No, the other one. Yeah. So is it based on, so your estimate? So if you estimate a million dollars for vehicle ex, excise tax and we get 2 million, they take that 1 million?
No. So that's a really good question.
Well, they take that 1 million in their calculation?
No. So they take in their calculation whatever you budget in the next year. So if we said in 2024, we thought, using vehicle excise, we thought it was going to be a million dollar, that was our estimate. If in the next year we said 1.2 million, they're going to say in that category, that's a 20% growth factor. So they're only, they're basically in those, in those categories highlighted in blue, it's not about your actuals. So again, you're incentivized to budget, like, they always talk about budget conservatively, but they actually build in incentives to our state aid structure to get you to do that. So if we, again, if we said, oh, in '24, we brought in 6.344 in motor vehicle, well, how about in '25, we push up our local receipt to 6.344? That would ultimately hurt us in our municipal revenue growth factor. And again, it's also possible with the way that excise taxes are structured, the values of those vehicles could be going down or, you know, as it depreciates over time, like, we wouldn't want to say, oh, we're just going to get exactly what we got last year. That's like a pretty, um, probably a dangerous precedent. But again, we're also trying to be very careful about not overreacting to one year of high revenues and sort of making a significant adjustment and assuming those are recurring because it's not just that if those revenues come in short, we're going to struggle. It's also, we ultimately are paying for it on the backend by having to pick up a larger share of these school education funding. So it's, it's, uh, does, is that kind of make it clear?
No, thank you.
It is very, it is strange, right? It's interesting that they would, you know, specifically go based on budgeted, but again, from their perspective, if you're not budgeting the revenues, then you're not considering it as a sort of recurring operating revenue to fund a recurring operating expense. So I think that's sort of the rationale behind it. Because if you're not accounting for a revenue, they're not, they're basically not holding you, they're, they're holding you harmless for saying, okay, well, you don't then have a revenue to budget for the schools, if that makes sense. And I think, again, just a point to really drive home is by being conservative on these numbers and keeping that growth factor low, it doesn't hurt the schools in any way. If anything, it gives us a stronger capacity to fund the schools. We, we always fund over required net school spending. And, you know, if we, if we have a, if they're giving us more state aid and we have strong growth in revenues in a year that's not in these categories, we have a higher capacity to fund the schools. One other thing to maybe call out is just cannabis impact fees. You see zero. I just left that on there because I think it's important for the council and the public to know that that's not something we're collecting anymore. So, you know, it was part of the, part of the structure of when recreational cannabis was put in place was that you'd be able to collect impact fees, the, the changes in regulations and sort of the structure from the CCC has made it, uh, where we're kind of holding the bag a little bit on that. So again, it's not something we're collecting and it's not something we're going to be budgeting as a revenue. And another one to pay attention to is, as well as, we're kind of seeing a falloff in cannabis, uh, cannabis excise tax. I think the competition with Rhode Island and the significant number of communities that have brought them in play, we've actually started to see sort of a downturn in the last few quarters in those revenues. That's reflected in the '25 budget. That was one of the, really the only receipts that we actually made a, kind of a cut on.
Are there any questions there before we move on? This is incredibly valuable and useful.
Thanks. So just to give a big picture of some of the anticipated free cash uses, again, this is really preliminary and the big numbers that aren't in there are, you know, realistically what we need to have a big conversation about is around bolstering reserves. But we talked about some of those figures coming right off the top, that 1.377. That number that's carried there for Medicaid is actually lower, so by about 100,000. So Deb had just given us the, uh, the, the updated estimate. So that was last year's number. So we did have a significant increase in, sorry, in the, um, Medicaid reimbursements and it'll be reflected in the appropriation to the schools. So again, the 376, I think is at, was it 480? So.
About 480.
Yeah. About 480, so, almost a half a million dollars. So, you know, what's going to the schools is about 1.1.85 million, right back to the schools, right off the top there. Additionally, one of the things we try to do is do sort of an, it's not a, a formal, but an internal holdback to cut for snow. One of the policies the last few years has been to try to cover the snow deficit in the current fiscal year rather than have to raise it on the tax levy the next year. So one of the things that we built in last year into kind of our, mapping out our uses was a million dollar holdback. Ultimately, the actual amount used was 425,000, but that was a relatively low snow year. The last two years have been low. I mean, that was really only three storms. If we have, you know, high snow year, I mean, Vermont, New Hampshire already getting snow. If we have a high snow year, let's all hope we do. If we have a high snow year, let's all hope we don't. It's, it's entirely possible that we could exceed that million, but that at least gives us like a, you know, we're basically saying, hey, let's hold that back, let's not, you know, let's internally kind of earmark that to say, you know, we might need to cover the snow deficit with that. Another placeholder is compensated absence reserve. You know, again, we continue to, continue to recommend putting away funds for compensated absences. That was the last year amount. Uh, it'll probably be relatively similar, potentially a little bit higher. Trying to build up that reserve until we kind of reach a, a strong point there to actually potentially utilize it for compensated absences, but we're definitely not there yet, so definitely a priority to fund that. Uh, there's a couple, again, TBD on some of those large, really large items. Uh, last year, the total of those items was, you know, almost five million. So that's a, if we look at a similar, if we look at making similar contributions, which I would actually recommend higher, that's, you know, that's a big, big portion of, of really coming right off the top. A couple of items on there, anticipated sick and vacation buybacks, that's kind of in line with historicals. And then anticipated earned time payments. Um, you know, these are one-time costs, so we traditionally utilize free cash for these. Or if, if not, if they're not budgeted, if you don't know them in advance, now we have a better idea of some of the pending retirements. So that's sort of an internal, internal holdback and just kind of an estimate at this point. And then actually, one of the items just got word of recently is related to a few of the vehicles under, uh, the DPW CIP that aren't passing inspection, significant corrosion and, um, issues on like the, uh, the chassis and below. I could be speaking about that wrong, but at those, those are critical vehicles that aren't able to pass inspection at this point. They're relatively old, but it's, it'll be time to replace those and free cash is a good place to go for, for those kind of purchases. So these are just some of the, you know, potential uses and even, uh, I wrote down a figure just to get an idea. Even just excluding the really big ones, like stabilization, capital stabilization and sped stabilization. If nothing else, that twelve point eight goes down to about eight and a half really quick. So just something to consider is, is, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of kind of standard uses we have every year that, that come out of that free cash kind of right at the beginning. They're still administrative decisions, right? They're not, you know, they're not, not all of them are, are sort of guarantees, but, um, things we definitely, definitely intend to, and sort of utilize. And if, for example, we had similar contributions to our reserves as last year, we'd be down to about four point three. So twelve point eight sounds like a lot, um, and it is, it's a significant number. In reality, it's about seven percent of our operating. So it's a, it's maybe not as big in that context. And now with sort of being in that last final year of, of utilizing ARPA funds and having those available, really only for the next few months, we're, uh, we're going to kind of be transitioning back to utilizing free cash for, for a lot of those things. So just, I'll try to be quick on retained earnings, but it's obviously really important. Retained earnings is largely the same as free cash, except that it's, you know, the net income specifically within the, within the enterprise funds. So again, certified annually in the fall traditionally. But again, these are restricted for, for the enterprise funds. We can't be using retained earnings to, to fund things that are outside the scope of, of water and wastewater. Uh, so really the, the difference in, in kind of the two is, is supplementing operating budget or, you know, rate stabilization or other, you know, sort of non-one-time expenses are actually a somewhat reasonable with retained earnings. Again, it's, it's sort of a net, it's your net income. So, you know, whereas free cash, I'd always recommend to try to be utilizing it for one-time expenses. That's a good baseline for retained earnings. It's also not unreasonable in times of, you know, e- e- extreme rate increases, different things to also try to stabilize. So anything you can do to sort of, you know, cut those operating, that's a reasonable use of retained earnings. It's not preferred, but again, it's, that's kind of the, I would say, a big difference philosophically between free cash and retained earnings. Primarily funding capital projects, uh, that's a big thing. Emergency repairs is also significant and in fact, the, you know, you saw the wastewater retained earnings number. We recently had, had an emergency situation over at the landfill or right outside the treatment facility and, uh, that's going to cost about a hundred and fifty thousand. That's an unanticipated expense that's going to come right out of retained earnings. In the meantime, we essentially covered it out of existing expenses, but out of like lights and power and other utility accounts, but we'll need to sort of transfer back via retained earnings because those expenses are still here to stay for the rest of the year. So it, it can go pretty quick. That was about ten, fifteen days of work. And that's about fifteen percent of the wastewater's retained earnings. So, you know, I know the conversation around, um, rates was, you know, this spring and we talked about days of operating cash on hand. And so I tried to kind of visualize for folks what that, what that retained earnings certification looks like in comparison of like actual days of operating. That number, again, from wastewater, that one, you know, just under one point one million is already going to be reduced by, you know, about thirteen, fourteen percent. So the number of days of operating income, you can already pretty much tick off, um, a few of those days just from that one emergency repair. So it's just something to, these numbers, like, it feels like, hey, we just had significant rate increases. These numbers seem big, they're, they're relatively small. We're not even at sort of like the minimum recommended of at least ninety days cash on hand. And realistically, we should be looking for six months to a year cash on hand. We're talking about a system, you know, we're talking about enterprise systems that have such critical infrastructure that if we don't have the capacity to fund emergency situations, like, it's going to fall. It could eventually fall on the backs of the taxpayers whole rather than the enterprise. So I, I think it's just critically important to kind of highlight that. I think this is a nice way to kind of talk about it and I'll try to utilize that sort of days of operating expense going forward. I think it's a, we're talking about big numbers, so it's a little bit easier when you see it in, hey, this many days is sort of our runway. It's just something to kind of, kind of think about. And one of the other things is, again, you know, we had a pretty significant turnback from wastewater. And despite that, you know, their retained earnings was a significant reduction, um, from last year. So we actually had over one million in unused wastewater retained earnings and, you know, basically came back at about that number for retained earnings. So, you know, we talked about in the budget about being really conservative with those retained earnings. And this is why, if we hadn't done that and we had kind of spent down a typical amount of retained earnings, we could have very well been, you know, at sort of a critically low point. So we were trying to be as conservative as possible and ultimately kind of came back in, um, basically where we ended. Uh, I just, you know, it's, it's a tough conversation, you know, given sort of restrictions and everything that's going on. But ultimately, you know, the revenues are largely derived from usage. So when we have, you know, restrictions and declining usage, ultimately it relates to, you know, lagging revenues. So from twenty three to twenty four is about five percent reduction in water usage and down about six percent in the, over the five-year average and six point seven percent over the ten-year average. That's a significant, that's a significant component to kind of, you know, our, we're, we're in a place where we, again, had to make, you know, big rate increases last year to try to address some of those changes. But important to note, you know, you see the water enterprise operating budget. One of the biggest changes from last year was an additional, you know, one point six million, I believe, in, in costs related directly to like debt and PFAS. So that's, and that's not even in that number because most of that was debt. So, um, those costs are going up. So we have declining usage and increasing expenses and that's sort of a challenge. Also, one of the things that I think we've really made strides on is our calculation of our wastewater rate. So what you see in the wastewater certification is the fact that our industrial usage was down significantly. But that's also exacerbated by the fact that for every twenty cubic feet of industrial usage we thought we had, it was more like nine. So we thought about twenty percent of our usage was industrial customers that were be, receiving the industrial surcharge. And the reality is, is it's closer to nine percent. So that's a significant difference. And then that's exacerbated by the fact that in twenty four, we had some industries that were temporarily closed, big users. And so the overall industri- industrial usage was down. So to be clear, you know, the twenty four usage wasn't what the twenty five rates were based off of. So we're not overcompensating, you know, that overcorrecting for those temporary reductions from those industrial users. But again, it's, it's just kind of a sign of, of where things are headed. So I think something to, to really keep an eye on. But again, I think we made a big, significant stride in adjusting for that in the last, in the last, um, rate setting period. So again, that's, uh, kind of largely what I had. And I'm, you know, I'm happy to take any questions or, you know, go back to any, any points.
And the, the one question I had, can you talk a little bit about the changes made to the, to the rating classifications, the double A, triple A ratings? And, um, what we might need to do in order to sort of maintain that double A rating?
Sure. So, um, we recently had a ratings call with S and P related to the reissueance of our, a renewal of our ban for the high school project. The reason it's important to call out that it was the high school project ban is we received the same double A stable rating as previously, but I think largely that's attributed to the fact that the entire balance of that ban is anticipated to come back as reimbursement through the MSBA. So it's a relatively really, really low risk, um, borrowing essentially from, from someone, you know, who might want to participate and bid on that. The S and P in September, uh, only a few weeks ago significantly overhauled their methodology for rating local, state and federal governments. You know, a little bit of pontification, but I think that's largely related, a direct result of sort of the US's overall debt picture. Um, and the fact that, you know, the federal government debt situation is relatively out of control and, you know, the ratings agencies have ultimately sort of downgraded US debt. And, you know, they're, I think they're kind of seeing a path to, uh, no good there. So that's, I think, a response to that and the fact that intergovernmental agencies are so, we're all sort of interconnected. So our rev, significant portion of our revenues are from the state, about thirty five percent. Significant portion of state revenues are directly tied to the feds. Like there's, we're very interconnected. I mean, even the last, you know, we talked about thirty million and how that's sort of propped up the city's financial position. You know, that's a direct result from the feds. So I think they're sort of pricing in, uh, a lot of changes in risk. So one of the biggest takeaways was, you know, we're double A stable, which is a solid rating. The reserve requirements and expectations for a double A stable municipality have sort of now transitioned to what would have been the reserve expectations for triple A rated communities. So our, um, our financial advisor, um, basically said, was one of the first things they said was, I've never seen the kind of, I've never seen reserve requi- like expectations like this for double A. These are the triple A sort of standards that are now being imposed on double A. Um, and there's definitely a renewed sense in penalizing for outstanding liabilities. So the city was sort of dinged categorically for having significant outstanding liabilities. We're not unique in that. It's, we're talking about pension and OPEB. We're, we're not unique in that. But again, they're just assigning a lot higher risk to those significant liabilities. Basically, I think it's indicative of a concern that, you know, things, difficult things are coming. Usually the S and Ps, the, when they have sort of methodology changes, a lot of times it's in response to significant downturns in the economy or in preparation for significant downturns. In some ways, you could argue that, you know, COVID was significant, but the reality is that the economy wasn't necessarily, didn't experience necessarily downturn as a result in terms of long-term. So I think it's more indicative of where they kind of feel things are headed. And the biggest takeaway was, is the city really needs to prioritize putting funds into reserves and trying to build up reserves, um, stabilization as much as possible. And, you know, do everything it can to kind of build that up. It's going to be tough because we usually have a ratings call in the spring. There's some things related to, you know, financial planning and, and policies that we can try to work on in the meantime to kind of strengthen our, our position in terms of their methodology. But it's going to be very difficult for the city to maintain that double A rating, which has a direct impact, impact and cost to our borrowing. So I realistically, when I saw their new methodology, I thought we were going to fall between, um, double A minus to A plus. And realistically more towards the A plus. So that's not a goal, right? We obviously want, our goal is to maintain double A stable. But I think it's, it's something that's sort of really right in front of us. And if we were going long-term on a larger borrowing and it wasn't, you know, this ban that's sort of just a renewal and we're actually reducing the amount and it's sort of all reimbursable, I think we likely would have been downgraded. Again, it's just, they kind of changed the, the methodology overnight, which is a challenge. But it's just, it's important for everyone to know because when we're thinking about big borrowings, um, you know, potential projects that could be coming up. If our rating goes down, the cost for, for borrowing and for, um, doing those projects increases significantly. If we're talking about, you know, ten, twenty, a hundred million dollar projects, we're talking about, you know, wastewater treatment plant that's, that's coming up, potential joint public safety feasibility that's, you know, pending. The impact of, you know, fifty basis points on a hundred million dollars is enormous. So, um, the direct impact is sort of, you know, needing to budget, needing to have additional revenues or cut expenses. So it's just something to, to keep in mind. I don't want to be all like doomsday. Um, I think there's steps we can take to, to try to mitigate the potential for that as much as possible. But I just think the reality of the, the change in methodology, it's going to hit a lot of communities, especially local governments. And, you know, basically what they told us was in your double A stable peer group, you're very low in terms of cash reserves. So, um, that's just something I think when we talk about uses of free cash, that's going to be a priority. At least my recommendation will be a pri- to prioritize those things. Cause, you know, there is some calculus of, you know, putting away money versus like, how much is the dir- in, increase in interest costs? Like you have to do, you have to have those intelligent conversations, like what is the true risk to the city? But in general, the lower your rating is, the, you know, the less attractive you are at, to, um, to be bid on as borrower and the more expensive it costs, so.
Councilor Holmes?
Thank you. So are both of you discussing the, adopting a formal policy to target the minimum free cash? You had mentioned that earlier.
Not necessarily at this point. I wanted to flag it, um, because it's, it is something a lot of communities have done. I think it warrants a discussion. And, and policies like that, again, they don't have to be, a lot of times the rating agencies want to see it. They don't necessarily need it to be an ordinance or any sort of, you know, it doesn't need to be law. It needs to be, in a lot of ways, they're really looking for some administrative policy and seeing, not even seeing if you're meeting it. Are you making steps towards it? So, um, you know, one of the actual, to speak on the methodology from S and P, we have sort of an informalized five percent target for stabilization, which we're kind of right at right now. Five percent of prior year revenues, um, five percent of operating costs. The, the S and P is looking for a policy that's at least eight. So is it possible to, you know, part of the conversation is, is it possible to, you know, develop a policy and sort of have steps to kind of get closer and closer without, you know, sometimes they're, they're looking for a policy written, not necessarily that you're meeting it yet, they want you to be meeting it and are you making strides towards it? But they also understand like some of those policies could be long-term efforts. So I wanted to flag that, you know, three to five percent, um, free cash policy that exists in other communities because I think it's, it's important contextually. We don't have anything like that formalized, but just to know that that is something communities are doing. And, you know, someone might, someone might have the idea of like, oh, the city, you know, had a, had a few million dollars left over at the end. Like, why aren't they cutting our taxes, right? It's like, well, those funds are used for a lot of really important things. And when you think about long-term, like, I wouldn't want us to be in a position where we only have three million dollars free cash. Like that used to maybe be kind of what people expected. That's going to be a really difficult position for the city to be in. I mean, we're talking one and a half percent of our operating. That would be a, um, I really hope we don't end up in that place. So I'd like to continue to see, you know, these sort of double-digit, you know, free cash certifications, but at least I'd like to see that sort of three to five percent.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilor.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down and for the presentation. On the industrial reduction, was that something that the city over-calculated or the study that was done?
So our prior rate model, I don't think had, we, we weren't doing a good job of, um, accurately accounting for our usage. That's not to say, when I say we, not the water or wastewater departments. The difference is, is industrial usage in water is different than industrial usage in sewer. So you could be industrially zoned, doesn't mean you're an industrial user. So it doesn't mean you're getting an industrial surcharge. And I think previously those got a little bit conflated and so wasn't actually looking into the detail in the accounts necessarily for like, and again, I would say that maybe was, you know, not properly executed on, on like my department's part. And so I think that was something that having a professional come in and look at that and be like, this doesn't really make sense. And I was like, what do you mean, right? And they're like, well, these are two different things, right? So things like that, like I think historically we had kind of, you know, assumed that the industrial usage was, you know, let's say, um, twenty percent of the usage. But maybe twenty percent of the customers are in sort of industrial, commercial zones. Doesn't mean they're industrial customers. So, um, again, it's really more about the billing code and who's getting the surcharge. So if anything, the rate study, that, that alone was a, just for that result was a very good investment because that's something without, I think, without digging into that detail and someone, another set of eyes looking at that, like, I don't think we would have realized that. And that's why you kind of need to bring in industry professionals, you know, not every, not all. not all the time, but as a routine, sort of a, a routine to kind of look at those things.
So, if I may, so when I was working on the twenty-fourth budget filling in, so to speak, that was the one thing that I spoke with Mandy Spohr about. I'm like, you know what, I, I don't, I know enough to know that you need a professional to come in and look at that. And I think the rate study last year that Mason spearheaded was incredibly valuable for a lot of reasons, but that was one of them, right? Like I knew enough looking at it to say like this, this needs somebody to come in and look at it. So that was functionally one of the big things that, that came on.
Thank you, and very glad to hear that. Um, so kind of touching on Councilor Holmes' point, looking at, I guess, projected spending, I, I agree with the dump trucks based upon when we did the tour, they were in rough shape. And I agree with the snow projection, mostly because it seems like now snow is more of an ice battle over thirty-seven hours instead of a eight-hour storm, so I get that. Does the administration have a rough figure on where they want to be in terms of what we're going to carry over to the next fiscal year? I just, in, in my mindset, I'd like to see us be more, you know, productive in putting away cash when we're going to potentially be asking the taxpayers to put projects down the road. I think that we should be doing our best efforts to kick in towards that potential bond or anything of that nature or borrowing.
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of, there's like kind of two questions baked in there. In terms of like a internal holdback slash like buffer for next year's free cash, last year, one of the things I did was sort of internally buffered ten percent of the certification, which last year was about a million dollars. Um, I, again, it's a, it's a, it's a regional approach to at least say something of like, I don't want us to touch this because we don't want to be at a place where we're at zero. But again, there could be years where our free cash certification's two million dollars and that's just unrealistic, right? Um, so, you know, that's sort of just a, a, to have something kind of set aside of like, I don't, I don't want us to, and on an administrative level, like ask, request appropriation from this balance of funds. Um, but in terms of the bigger picture of reserves, the currently, you know, I think our, our ending year stabilization fund balance was about five point two percent of our prior year, um, revenues, so of our twenty-four revenues. The, you know, again, one of the policies that S and P talked about is like eight percent, but the, you know, the thing that we have to look at is, is when they're looking at reserves, they're, they're not just looking at, um, they're looking at your free cash as part of like included in your reserves. So, you know, they, they looked at our balance sheet and they said, oh, you have about fourteen percent between all of our reserves, but they wanted us around twenty. So we have to kind of determine what is their calculus because if we're going to formalize a policy, um, it, we might as well do it for, you know, again, we want to have a policy that works for the city, but also if, if part of our target is to ensure we're meeting those sort of ratings expectations and benefiting, you know, the rating for the city and ultimately the taxpayer, we want to have a good understanding of how they're calculating that. Um, if, to give you an idea, if the city's target was to even get to stabilization at about six point, six and a half percent, we'd have to appropriate at least two and a half million dollars, um, of this free cash to get to six and a half percent. Uh, and that's, again, that's six and a half percent. Um, there's, you know, communities out there who would never want to be below ten. So it, it's something we have to have a big conversation about, um, and it's a balancing act, right? It's not ju, you know, that's, there's other places to also utilize those funds, right? I think the capital stabilization fund, which we established last year, I think is more of what we might look at as, you know, putting funds away for future capital expenses, but also more of an active fund to draw on, right? It's totally dependent on the council approving, um, any sort of appropriation from there. But, and it's a stabilization, stabilization fund, so I believe it's a two-thirds vote? Is that, yeah. So two-thirds vote to approve from capital stabilization, so, um, but I would look at that as more of, hey, you know, even if we have a use two years from now that we're intending to kind of save for, that might be the place to put it rather than the stabilization. That is truly what I consider a rainy day fund if things, you know, we have significant downturn in the economy, like the intention is, is not to utilize those funds unless absolutely necessary. I mean, that's really what it's there for. It's, it's like, you know, in your own home, you have, might have an emergency fund, right? And you might say, you know, some folks have six, try to have six months of, you know, expenses, things like that, right? We're, six months of expenses would be insane for the city. We're talking about a hundred million dollars, but, um, but again, it's like having that emergency fund, which in the context of, you know, a two-hundred-million-dollar budget, it's, ten million dollars is, is five percent, right? It's, it's, you know, that's a small amount, that's a couple of weeks, right? Um, so, so that's just something to, you know, again, I really look at that as the emergency rainy day fund, um, but other reserves like the capital stabilization is probably the place to go for that.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much. This was incredibly informative and I very much appreciate you spending your time.
Thanks so much. If there's follow-up questions, you know, feel free to reach out to me. Um, I apologize for taking so much time. I can talk forever, so thanks for cutting me off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mason. Good luck on, uh, on leave.
Thanks.
I will be available. Please reach out to me via email or should be a text. I think everyone has my phone number, so.
Yeah. Good luck with that. All right. Um, we have three items on the finance committee. The first item from the docket of November fifth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to authorize the school department to pay the following previous year's school bill totaling two thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. WB Mason, one thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. Dylan Yeps, one thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion is in order. This is a previous year's school bill for school supplies and a math award. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, from the docket of November fifth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to adopt the recent Adarbor Retirement Board vote in favor of increasing the cost of living adjustment base from thirteen thousand dollars to fourteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's in order. Um, and I'll pass this around. And some additional information, and just for clarity, what this, this is doing is this is increasing the amount that the cost of living increase, um, is, is based on from thirteen thousand dollars to fourteen thousand. Now, for, say for the retirement, uh, if somebody had a salary of fifty thousand or sixty thousand dollars, their, their COLA increase for each year is only based on, currently is only based on that first thirteen thousand dollars, provided they, they make more than, their retirement is based on them making more than thirteen thousand dollars. So, um, in the, the max COLA increase each year is three percent. Um, it, it changes from year to year. Um, so what this is doing is proposing to change it from basing that off of thirteen thousand, the first thirteen thousand to the first fourteen thousand. Um, oh, and I had it written down. I, I think when, um, when I was meeting with Mason, when we calculated, I think on a per-person basis per year, I, I think the, the difference for a, a max COLA of three percent and the difference between thirteen thousand and fourteen thousand was like sixteen dollars or something like that. So on a per-person basis, it's not, i- it's not a huge increase and this was requested of the retirement board to, to look at this and increase this. Now, with that said, it is, it, it, it does have an impact to the city when, when you add this up to everybody within the retirement. And in the, the backup information, um, the impact for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, um, the initial impact was only like twenty thousand dollars, um, to us. But then if you look out, uh, ten years out, the impact grows to roughly five hundred thousand to, um, I think it was five or six hundred thousand, um, comparatively, when, when that COLA increases year over year. Um, Councilor Holmes.
So five hundred thousand in that specific year, years out?
No, no, cumulative.
Okay, okay.
If you're comparing what the scheduled contribution would be that year for fiscal, uh, for fiscal year twenty thirty-seven compared with and without, um, with and without this change. Councilor Holmes.
Is, so what made them, did they see that other communities were also doing this? Or I guess?
Other, other communities are higher, um, and, and based it off of a different amount. I didn't get information about what other communities or I, I don't have that comparison data. Councilor Lavoie.
I, I guess, if you're finished, I will comment because I have a more broad comment as well as a couple of figures.
Okay.
But I'd rather give you the time to finish.
Yep. And then just the little bit of additional information that I handed out was the actuarial tables, um, that have database, uh, that look at with and without and, um, just kind of summarizes over the next couple of years what this looks like as opposed to, um, the, the backup data, looked at it, um, through twenty thirty-seven, but this is a little bit more near term and, um, I think it's a little bit easier to, to grasp it, it's all on one page. So, um, I don't, so the, in the one other thing I would mention is that the retirement board, their decision was three to two. So it wasn't a unanimous vote and I'm not going, I, I would like to vote this out of the finance committee. Um, and if people have additional questions, um, I would encourage them to reach out to the auditor for, for details. I would like to vote this out of the finance committee unless there's, unless people really want to hold on to this. But, um, I don't want to encourage people which way to vote, one way or the other. Um, but I would like to vote it out of, so with that, I'll leave it to you.
Thank you, Chair Cobus. Um, I'm in favor of this and to my knowledge, the vote was, the three retirees were in favor of it and the two city members on the board were not in favor of it. Um, these are people that retired with the city. They spent the utmost amount of time with the city and chose to end their career here. In terms of comparability, North Adarbor is sixteen thousand dollars and Taunton is sixteen thousand dollars, so we're behind the case. And I think that our approach should be retaining employees. We talk about retaining employees, but we're not competitive when we're asking about people to stay here for a long tenure and retire with us. So, um, with that being said, we obviously vote however you want, but I feel in terms of if we want to be a competitive employer, we need to look at things like this. I mean, who wouldn't look at a retirement with the city? So, um, you know, I tend to be one of the more conservative people here, but I think there's a time and place and when people dedicate their lives to the city, I think that we should make sure that, you know, we're doing our part to take care of them. Thank you.
Well said. Other, other comments? Councilor Tversky.
So I was just curious, um, given the small differential, I mean, personally, from thirteen to fourteen thousand, I kind of wondered if this was part of a larger effort to maybe over time increase this to Councilor Lavoie's point to maybe be more competitive with, with other cities, towns. Um, I, I would definitely support this, but I, I'm just curious about long-term if, um, you know, what the, if there were any conversations about that, but, you know, that may be beyond the scope of what's before us now, but wanted to mention that as a comment.
I am not aware of any sort of broader, long-term plan to increase this over time. Councilor Lavoie.
Thank you. I believe and I could be wrong from what I gathered, we haven't raised it in quite some time, it's been at least a few years. I know, uh, last year, I want to say it was shot down potentially. So I think that this is just, I don't foresee this from what I've gathered to be an every year ask. I think it's more so trying to put Adarbor somewhere back in the middle of the spectrum. And I will send out a full spreadsheet of where all the towns are on this. I do have that. Um, I just got it today, otherwise I would have sent it through Virginia, but I will send it through her so that you can kind of see where we all, where we rank in terms of similar-sized communities. I mean, we're pretty low on a per-populous basis in term, you know, some of the other towns below us are really small towns or state agencies, so.
That would be useful. Thank you. Councilor Holmes.
Thank you. I, I think that to your point, it's not a bad idea to get the history. I wouldn't mind that if you're able to get it for the full council of when, when it last had an increase.
Okay, I can get that information. Sure. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Next, uh, from the docket of November fifth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to approve securing a purchase order from funds in account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero dash five-three-zero-one-five-zero, citywide special events professional services account two-zero-seven-three, SCE five-seven-eight-zero-three-five, summer celebration event, special event account two-zero-zero-four-five-three-zero-one-zero-one, Fourth of July professional services in account two-zero-seven-four-dash-five-three-zero-one-zero-one fireworks professional services in order to sign a contract as soon as possible for a twenty-twenty-five Independence Day fireworks display.
Second.
Motion is in order. Um, this is just to secure a contract for next year's fireworks. The overall cost for, um, the Fourth of July is esti, uh, total cost is estimated at fifty-eight thousand. Um, the cost for the fireworks contract that we're, we're talking about here is twenty-five thousand dollars, um, just for the, the pyro, the, the, for the fireworks themselves. And we currently have, um, roughly eleven thousand dollars in that account, um, available, the, um, summer celebration special event, but, um, available for this. So this is just to, uh, s- secure the purchase order and, um, in order to do that, we need to, in a vote from the council to, um, to do that. Um, and that's what this is. Are there any questions?
Can you just clarify, this is funds that was already raised in the past from previous committees for that, correct? In terms of like this account here is previously fundraised for?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, and that's what I thought, but I wanted to clarify too in terms for, I guess, anybody watching or other members, just this is not essentially city money, it's privately fundraised at one point in time.
And the intent is to put money back in to that account as well? Counselor, or President Delicia.
Before I ask my question, may I ask the chair if appropriate to ask the auditor to come up just to provide some clarity on this account? If you don't, if Deb doesn't mind.
Yeah, so part, so part of the money, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is part of that money is in account one-one-two-four-one-thousand?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
That money is general fund appropriation money. That money coupled with donations will make up the entire twenty-five thousand dollars once all of the money is in those three accounts. But a portion of the money is for special events that was voted in the twenty-fifth budget. The requirement for all money available this year can't be used for something in next fiscal year without the municipal council's permission. So in order for us to be timely for an event that is really four days after the close of the fiscal year potentially, right? We need the permission of the municipal council to execute that. But the sig, the most significant portion of the contribution for the event will be through donations, which are the two additional accounts that are referenced in the, um, communication item to the council.
Thank you for the clarification. No, that's very helpful, yes.
Thank you.
President Delicia.
So, thank you, Deb. Sorry to put you on the spot, but, you know, we have a longstanding history of doing that. Um, I just want to say over the last couple of years, it's been political football going back and forth. I appreciate Councilor Lavoie's, um, question. I appreciate the mayor's pivot last year to go to the, uh, laser show. I appreciate the mayor's, um, putting together the fireworks committee, which I know Chrissy Claussen's been working on along with Virginia, several members of the public. There's been a lot of work that's been going on to this, uh, into this rather, there's a lot of excitement. I think now is a time that we should be making this, um, transfer because to the auditor's point, you know, Fourth of July- because to the Auditor's point, you know, 4th of July is literally four days after the end of fiscal year. I think this is something the community looks forward to, I think it's something that the community needs and it's a great event to bring people together, so. Um, I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Council Foa.
Uh, thank you. So this commits us to the $25,000 expenditure. The contract will be, the purchase order for a contract will be for $25,000.
That is correct.
And if there is a shortfall in the fundraising effort?
Then the city is still on the hook for, for that. Correct, that's what a purchase order is and that's what we are approving as the council, yes.
Thank you.
President Delicia.
Just to, uh, Council Foa's point, one thing I've noticed in the past is this city comes together in ways that most do not, so I think in that, uh, situation, we would see the generosity of this community come together. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes and that concludes the business for the Finance Committee, I move to adjourn at 7:50. Motion's in order, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned.
Uh, let me call the, I don't.
Oh, yes, yes.
I, um, like to call the City Property Claims Committee, um, back in, back from recess and to order at 7:50. And I have, uh, five things I want to bring out, but I first would like to call the mayor forward as a guest in regards to, um, the proposal.
Thank you, Chair Reynolds, um, uh, good evening, Council, and first of all, thank you for your support of the request to, um, grant permission to enter into a contract. Um, and for the record, the donation effort is in full effect. And I challenge you all because I just wrote a check this morning for a hundred dollars to the fund and I call out every one of you to match me on that, all right? Um, so thank you for your support of the fireworks event. All right, um, I want to get to the point, yes, Council Kobus.
Where do we drop those off?
Um, I gave my check to Kathy, but you could give yours to Virginia.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so you're already having a long evening, I want to get to the point very quickly. First, I want to let you know in regard to the, uh, yesterday's editorial uh, in the paper and questions I got from at least one counselor as to why I was not present at the last public hearing. I want to let you know that I would not intentionally disrespect your body, I reached out to the Council President, Vice President and the Chair and informed them of the fact that, um, my understanding was that the public hearing pertained only to disposition. I felt that I had made my case adequately clear in the communication and that I didn't, there was really nothing more I could say, I made a request to dispose. Uh, the President responded and said, yep, you're right, it's about disposition, maybe we'll call you to the committee meeting. So just for the record, if you were not aware of that fact, I wasn't here because I let folks know so I wouldn't be, and if you need me to be there, I was, I'd be happy to, and I was in fact sitting upstairs in my office. Number one. Number two, I don't want to belabor the point, uh, the points that I made in my communication, uh, I think I laid it out pretty clearly there. Um, I will tell you that the reason I'm standing here is because I don't believe in just spending money for spending sake. I don't spend money to make people happy, I don't spend money to check a box. I believe in investing in people and the city. And when I'm about to embark on an investment, I do a value analysis, all right? The value analysis in this instance was $15 million estimate to rehabilitate the existing Highland Clubhouse. Yes, we could do that. We could put a senior center there that's open eight to four and close on nights and weekends. That didn't really seem like a maximum value use of the money or the property. So I started a conversation with my staff and thank you all for coming tonight and for your patience. Um, and we met and I started to think about, okay, what's the maximum, how can we achieve maximum or better value? So the first idea I had was to invite perhaps a gerontologist or some kind of medical counseling or a doctor to the senior center to provide some kind of evaluative or referral services. And the conversation evolved thereafter to larger, uh, conversations and it occurred to me that Jesus, maybe if we put some seniors in the area and in the building, we could achieve maximum use of the property and the investment. So that's why I'm standing here before you with what I think is fundamentally a good idea. I think it does justice by the taxpayers and the city, I think it does justice to the residents, but fundamentally, folks, it just deserves to be considered. All you're going to vote for in disposition is to give me the opportunity to bait the hook and I can bring back you the fish that we catch. You ultimately will choose any proposal that we send down to you and recommend. So you have two bites at the apple. I just want a chance to give this idea some air, that's all I'm asking for. Now, I understand that that does not meet with some people's expectations of the property and that for some folks their minds will not be changed. I get it, I get it, right, not everybody loves it, I can, I can appreciate that, so I'm not here to necessarily argue that point. I just want to let you know how we got to be here, um, and fundamentally to answer your questions, to give my staff the ability to answer your questions. Kelly could tell you about a recent Council on Aging vote that voted unanimously to support the proposition. There I can tell you about the Park Commission that also voted, or at least stated their support, I don't think it was a vote in fairness to them. And my friend Gary can tell you just more about kind of his perspective of why I think this project is not only in the best interest of the seniors, but in the city as well. Um, so having said all that, I have a bunch of papers here, so I'm ready to answer any of your questions, I thought that might be the best use of time.
Uh, thank you. Uh, kind of a comment, but also a question too, is, um, I keep hearing people saying, um, that they want to preserve the green space, but I personally don't look at, uh, tar as being green space. I don't know how, if you, if I'm wrong, please tell me.
Thank you, Council Angelo, I appreciate your point. Uh, first of all, I want to remind everybody that the five and a half acres roughly, that's the topic of this discussion, was subdivided a couple of years ago. Um, and as Gary will tell you, the idea at the time was to subdivide and then rezone it to commercial, which some might argue is a greater offense than what I'm proposing, which is needed housing and needed senior center. But to your point, Council Angelo, if developed means anything other than things being in the natural state, the whole property is to some degree developed, right, we mow it. That's to some degree, if you will, development, but this particular area is in fact paved with buildings on it. It's developed. Um, so yes, that's why I thought, it's already subdivided, it's already got stuff on it, I'm not fundamentally changing it um, and not affecting at all the rest of the property and I want you to recall in my, in my communication, I wanted to make it clear because I remember hearing Council Holmes and other folks, every time the former mayor sent something down, what's the plan for the property? I was trying to give you a plan, I was trying to button it up, I thought that was in the city's, city's best interest to put this to bed. To match this project with some funds we recently got from, um, Representative Scanlon to do some improvements to the park, uh, to the Highland, to put, you know, benches and more picnic tables and stuff like that, to really put a bow on it. To utilize the parking lot on Rathman Willard and make that the main entrance, which in light of the turnout for the cross-country events that we're having is much needed. Um, you can't even get in the mechanic's street side. So for all those reasons, but fundamentally, yes, because to your point, I believe it's already developed. So, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, it's more of a comment, uh, Mayor, with all due respect, I was pretty disappointed to hear you insinuate that the reason you weren't here is because of the email exchange. Um, it is not the, the role of the President or anyone in this body to determine who comes down to a public hearing. Um, you and I have since talked about it, um, the other day, kind of a little bit about the project and where it could go. Um, but, you know, it's, I've been on the floor, I've been on the record saying that when these pieces of business come down, I think it's imperative that the administration comes down to the public hearings. You said that you were going to be up in the office if you, if you heard any reason to come down.
Yeah.
That's your judgment, wasn't mine.
And respectfully, sir, you made very clear when you kicked off the public hearing last week that the conversation was deed about disposition.
Correct.
Kind of me ended off track from that conversation in my opinion, um.
Which is in my purview as President to allow.
Absolutely, I'm not saying, Jay, uh, Council, President Delicia, I just wanted to say for the record that I had reached out and indicated my plans and I, I was upstairs, yes, I could have come, but I was looking at, when the council voted to acquire Highland, that was the nature of the vote, so I thought for that narrow focus, I didn't have anything I could necessarily add to the conversation at that point. That went beyond the question of disposition.
Thank you.
So I'd like to just, I'm going to step in here because I literally did tell you, you didn't have to come. I said it, I, I did call you and when you told me it was disposition, I said, there's no need for you to come. So, uh, I thought the article that was written in the Sun Chronicle was way, way off base because you were ready to come, everybody was ready to come and I had said to you, it's just going to be a disposition, read it out and, uh, that didn't happen. So, uh, my apologies to you, Mayor. And anyone else have questions?
Thank you. And, uh, kicking back to the topic at hand, I suppose, the project, um, first of all, most, thank you for coming down.
Sure.
Uh, I do commend you on saving that parking lot, by the way, I thought removing that was kind of foolish when it was already paid for. Um, but one thing I wanted to comment on was kind of the, the timeline for this and how much time would be saved if it was privately developed versus done so with a municipality, like, in terms of faster construction, I think that's one thing that's kind of overlooked. And I just wanted to comment on it, I thi-, I feel like a lot of times it's more about the money factor, which, like, $15 million savings is massive. Um, but I also like to be the drummer of how much faster it will be done on a private sector as opposed to being done on a municipal sector.
Yeah, I don't know that I can quantify the difference for you, Council Lavoy, but generally speaking, private development does go faster than government development, I think that's generally true. But I can't give you like a number of days or whatever.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I have more comment than two as well, this is the point of, I think when we're looking at the potential project, you know, those are things to consider. And one thing I would ask would be, um, regarding the disposition, if there was, you know, an amendment in it that, um, should this not go into fruition, it would come back and just be holding of the city, so more like, you know, that this would only be disposed of for this set project? Would, that's kind of the timeline, or, sorry, that's the expectation put forward?
That's all I've asked for is disposition to enter into potentially a lease, a ground lease.
Um, Laurie, first, second, third, four.
Hi, how are you doing? Thank you for coming. Um, there have been lots of comments, um, at the public hearing and also from others, um, about, um, saving it from housing because when we bought it, we were, um, stopping the housing from going in, I'm sure, you know, big housing, you know, a big development. Um, but some have mentioned, especially in the public hearing, that this is kind of going against it by, um, suggesting that housing go, um, into, um, Highland Park. Um, that's just my first thing and I just, secondly, um, I'm worried of like a slippery slope of the, for the rest of the property to be developed as well if we start with, with this five acres.
So I don't know if the first part of your statement was a question, I didn't sense a question there?
Not really.
But you want me to comment on the housing question? Uh, yeah, it was fundamentally, from what I understand, to protect the property from being developed into subdivisions. I'm not at all, at all proposing that. Uh, but having read, and I have for you, if you haven't read it, the, um, you know, uh, the Task Force Force Report and, um, fundamentally, Council Sawyer, you have to do what's in the best interest of the city in the moment that you're in fact living in, right? And the report comprehends that, like, you have to make the decisions that right for the city. I'm not proposing a subdivision, I'm proposing this be located on a property on a particular part of the parcel that is already developed. To your question about the slippery soap, slope, I have to remind you again, that's up to you. I can't do anything on the rest of that property without coming before you and asking for your permission. I don't intend to do anything else on the property, but I would have to come downstairs and say, hey, could you free up another, you know, three acres or whatever? That would be up to you, not up to me. So, yeah, yep.
If I may, thank you for being here, hey. What you might bring back to us is one proposal, the one you favor of, let's say you get three. Do you bring one back to the council?
Generally, yeah, generally the committee that reviews and will make our, like we did at 135 County. We make a recommendation, the committee makes a recommendation and asks for the council to approve it or accept it.
So I have a concern, which I want to at least state, which is that, um, we don't get to see alternatives, alternatives of the sort of if we have two stories of housing, uh, above the senior center. If we have two different buildings, one is a senior center, one is a, uh, a housing, um, unit, um, of some sort or other. I'm also concerned about how this will actually work, how the maintenance, if we have one building with a senior center uh, and rental apartments upstairs, excuse me, how it's going to work, who's really going to be in charge of the maintenance? What happens if it's a, a company that goes out of business, it gets, becomes bankrupt? We're talking about a long-term lease. Um, does that lease, it's, is the proposal you are going to send out require that whoever builds the property also maintains it, or is that going to be a separate contract? How is that going to really work?
So, I'm hesitant to answer kind of questions out of speculative, I, I don't, look, I, at the end of the day, I can't promise what's going to happen in the future, but, uh, fundamentally, a ground lease is a long-term arrangement, it's 5299 years. And during the term of the lease, the people, they own the building, if you will, it is theirs to operate and maintain, not the city's, we own the ground that it's on. They are responsible for and own and will maintain the building, so it's, it's, it's their building, that's what they're building. Does that answer your question in terms of who's responsible for maintenance? It wouldn't be the city, not for maintenance of the building, it's not a city building.
Well, it, may I continue? If, uh, if there's no water, if there's no heat one day?
Well, we'd, well, heat is not, we don't, the city doesn't provide heat in other private buildings at the moment, it's a, it's not a city building.
Private building which is going to be occupied by a city-funded agency. Is that right?
Yes, potentially.
Um, and do, are we going to have an opportunity to review the quality of the private company that is going to build this building and maintain?
So that's all part of the review process, is looking for their financials, their experience, do they have the money to do what they say they're going to do? Do they have the experience to do the, to say what they're going to do? So that's all part of kind of the vetting of the proposal process. Because your last thing you want to do is enter into a contract with a company that's unable or unable to do what it proposes to do. So that is definitely part, not only of the bid, but of the bid review process. To establish satisfactory financials and, yes, inability to do.
To do it and to maintain it for 50 years?
Correct. Yeah.
Well, um.
Is that, is that it, Pam?
I think so, yes.
Okay, and if you have further ones?
Yes.
Okay. Who did I say? I think it was you, you and then Waterman and you and then Jonathan. And then Diana.
Diana before me, sorry.
You go.
Okay.
You go.
Um, so I've, I've tried to do a ton of research on this and I feel like I'm kind of on information overload and, so I would assume, I'm, I'm guessing and I'm hoping that if this was to, we were to just, uh, put this up for disposition, that we would protect the remaining 80, I want to say 83 or 87 acres in perpetuity, Article 97. Um, also from, uh, regarding what, uh, Council Lavoy said, I have a decision here from, uh, Peter Mello that I haven't read yet because I got it like five minutes before we got here, but it's about, it's regarding having a sundown clause, meaning we are specifically disposing of this for this purpose and if we as a, you know, as a body don't approve any of the, uh, what the mayor sends down, then we can just go back to owning it, it's not up for disposition. Well, and it won't be up for disposition anymore. So specifically for this project and if we approve something. Um, and then when, when you talked about the financials and everything, I, I know that everybody gets vetted and such and when I was reading up on this, that's one thing that scared me because, you know, developers always mean well and, you know, God forbid, something happened where they build half the building or whatever and they run out of money. Um, so that's concerning and can you clarify what you answered on city-funded agency that Council Foa was saying? I, I kind of missed part of that.
I didn't, I didn't reply enough, she said. She was talking about, like, this is going to be a city property.
Yeah.
We're going to be man, we manage the Council on Aging, but we don't pay for their, they actually own the building.
Right, right, okay, I, I just thought, I, I thought I had missed something. And, um, my last question, and I, and I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, I'm, I'm, I'm sure you don't or you would have to look into it. It was brought up at the, um, public hearing about putting out an RFP before the disposition or at the same time. It was brought up at the public hearing about putting out an RFP before the disposition or at the same time of the disposition.
You have to vote to approve disposition. I can't put out an RFP in the absence of a disposition. I don't have the, I don't have the ability to do that. I don't have the authority.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, you, if you vote about out for disposition, the RFP will be crafted and released. The bids will come back, the bids will be reviewed, the council will decide whether or not they want to accept the bid. Yeah, so that's all dictated, Council Dolan has pretty much all outlined the ordinances. So, but yeah, you have to, you have to free it up for disposition before the RFP can go out.
And so, the only thing else, when I was reading on this, it sounds extremely difficult as far as contractual. Because you have to consider, you know, what they pay, and if, you know, if we do a fifty-year lease, ninety-nine-year lease, obviously, the payments won't be able to be the same. They'll have to be, obviously, going up as the years go on. And who, who would be the reviewer of this contract?
The contract? So, obviously, I'd be working with.
What attorney do we have that would be?
The solicitor. Ground leases have been done, so we're not in any way on the frontier here. So, there's plenty of examples out there, they've been done. But I'm already working with Peter's associate on starting to craft the RFP and then the lying ground lease. There are templates out there, and there are attorneys who are experts in this field, so I'm not, I won't be writing it myself, I assure you that.
I assumed you wouldn't be, but we would be referencing and referring to experts in this to make sure that we don't. Because, like I said, as I was reading into this, the more I read, it just seemed extremely detailed, convoluted and difficult and from everything that I read. So, I'm really worried about the future after I'm dead and buried.
I mean, respectfully, when you have a big project, whether it's a public or private project, and there's money's exchange between two parties, you're gonna have a lengthy contractual agreement. Because contractual agreements are there to like, well, if this happens, what about that happens, right? What are your obligations, what are my obligations? So, the bigger the deal, I suspect, the bigger the contract and the various terms therein, but we can get there, 'cause it's been done. And there's people who are experts who are gonna help us do it.
All right, thank you for coming.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, I had two separate questions, so perhaps I should go with one now, maybe one later.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Is it, is it already determined that the site of the, in your mind? That the site of the senior center is underneath the proposed apartments?
No.
Or could they be in two separate areas of that area?
It's entirely up to the proposals, yeah. That wouldn't be a requirement, however they wanna do it. I'm kinda curious to see what folks come back with, but no, it's not.
Well, it could also be how we would want it.
Yeah, I would be very careful, though, respectfully, Council Waterman, to dictate particular terms to a developer. I'm not looking to tie people's hands, but I suspect you might get variations on a theme. I don't know. I would be disinclined to make that stipulation. I would just like to see what they come back with. But that could, you know, I just, yeah, I don't know. Is it an option? I'm sure it is. I'm not a developer, however.
I'm thinking of things like parking, for example, that might cause that need.
Yeah, can Gary chime in?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, I think what we would probably do, a question I think that Council Dolan asked a little while ago, how would it blend in? We'd probably have some minimum performance standards, there have to be some basic fundamental expectations. One of those would be, as you asked about, the edge. So, as the planner, not only when I look at a site plan, do I look at the context of the lot? I also look at the context in the area that the development is going in, and therefore looking at the edges. So, being part of the mayor's team on this, not so much on the writing of the contract, but with my staff, we would be probably recommending to the city solicitor, to the mayor's office, part of the RFP, at least have some minimum performance standards so that the developer's aware of some of the expectations. If I may digress very briefly, much like the RFP, that the redevelopment authority is preparing for the disposition of the TOD property. We, myself, the Economic Development Director, we spent a lot of time over certain elements that fall into our jurisdiction. And I port over those sections of minimum performance standards, but to the extent where you don't wanna get too prescriptive or too descriptive, is then it kinda handcuffs the architectural team. So, I think, again, let me just manifest that we would insert some minimum performance standards. Parking, landscaping, edges, viewscapes, stormwater management, parking, and other things to that effect, without being orally prescriptive. Because to a certain extent, when one comes to the city, they're always calling, hey, what do you want? Well, I always refer them to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations, if you may, offer some guidance of what the community wants, those documents, what the community's looking for. So, I think in this, on a microcosm, we would have those performance standards to give the developing team, the developer team, some perception of what it is we're looking for. Architectural features, for example, as well.
Thank you, Gary.
I'll push on to one more question?
Yes.
So, what I'm, what I'm hearing in some letters that we've been receiving in the city council, and what I heard last week from ninety percent of the people who came up to the podium, was that it was written in stone, they didn't use that language, that there was an, there was an actual agreement five or six years ago. And I was not on the council at that time, maybe half the people here were.
Yes.
And, and I don't believe you were.
No, I was not.
No. But was there an agreement that there would be no housing at all at Highland Park? And I don't know if you even know the answer. I researched what I could find in city council, and I didn't find any agreements.
I can tell you what I know and what I understand, Council Waterman. Agreement, I don't know what that agreement would look like, but I can tell you that the council vote includes in the language to that effect, right? The council voted simply to acquire the property, has nothing to do about uses of the property, and that was intentional. So, I can tell you that. I can tell you that the future use report is a moment in time. There are several references in here that, as the times change, you gotta do what's in the best interest of the city at the particular moment. So, if by agreement, you made a contract or some other legally binding document, I am not aware of any such thing. I am aware of expectations that there not be subdivisions there. And I'm not proposing subdivisions. I'm proposing a building on a developed area, five point five acres that was subdivided after the acquisition of the property, for a purpose of one at least was potentially commercial, and other uses have been contemplated. Right, we've talked about doing a lot of things with that property in the last six years, five and a half years. This is just another idea for it. But, yeah, so I think I answered your question, I'm not aware of any formal or legally binding agreement. Just perception and expectations, which is fair, you know?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So, if, I think it's in the best interest of the council to set the standards for the RFP, just like we did with County Street with the old high school. Because otherwise, you're, we have an issue here in our city where we do these feasibility studies, and we don't, it's the same thing. We don't guide them about what we're looking for. So, to just say to a developer, this is a blank canvas, do what you want, that doesn't make any sense to me. We should be saying what we're looking for, and then, when it comes back to us, we could say, yeah, this is kind of what we're all looking for. Because what Gary's thinking is not what I'm thinking. Clearly, we have a very different view of what this property was used for. So, I think it's in the council's best interest to say, this is what we're interested in, or not interested in. So, the other thing is, is that, is it your understanding that they will own the building and that the city will not pay rent for the senior center?
No.
So, we will rent, we will rent the, is, what is your understanding?
I'm trying to answer your question.
Go ahead.
So, these are all contractual arrangements, right? So, they're gonna own the building, they're gonna rent properties out. The city could collect rent for the use of the space, right? Part of what you do in a ground lease is now you have a tenant. The tenant is in the building, the tenant pays the city rent, right? Now, if this, if the senior center or the community center, whatever we wanna call it, works out, there's two ways in my mind that we could go about it. Number one, you could offset the value of the rent payments by the return for using the space, right? Or you could just get your rent and then pay them for use of the space, right? So, those are two ways that could go about. I think I might have answered your question, but there is definitely rent contemplated, because they put a building on the city space, and so they're renting the space, if you will, for ground.
We're renting the space?
No, no, they're renting it. And then, we could, we're going to use their space, it is still fundamentally their space. And so, we would either pay them directly for it or offset their rent payments to the city for it.
So, there's a potential that we would be paying a developer to rent the space? Is that what you're saying?
I suppose so, yeah. Yeah, we have to, it's their space.
So, if it's fifteen hundred square feet and it's fifteen dollars a square foot, that would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, we would be paying them to lease the space?
What is your, fifteen hundred square feet?
I'm just doing a rough estimate, that if the, if the senior center is fifteen thousand square feet, and that's fifteen dollars a square foot, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, we would be potentially paying.
I suppose, I don't know where you got the square foot price. What are you basing that on?
A general estimate that some of the members from the Municipal Building Commission were kind of guiding me towards, saying that this is, this is, this is a fair kind of price of what we could potentially be paying.
I have no, that's conjecture. I have no idea of knowing that that would be the case. I don't know that to be, I don't know that to be true.
I feel like we don't have a lot of these details around what this could look like. So, so if we're in the space, and we don't even know if it's gonna be built out, like, is your understanding that they're going to build out the senior center? Or are they gonna, is it gonna be a concrete space that then we have to do the build out for, and we have to pay for the furniture? I'm, there is so many question marks about this. What, what do you envision happening?
It is my understanding that the space won't in fact be, it's not gonna be just a concrete hole in the building, that it will be finished, if you will, to some degree. Because, again, it is ultimately their space, we're gonna be using their space, so it would be finished. But then, we would be able to get in there and, I suppose, to some degree, modify it to our needs. But it is their building, they will equip it, there'll be carpet on the floor, and the walls will be finished. We're not moving into a basement, unfinished basement or anything like that.
How, has this been done anywhere else in the Commonwealth that you're aware of? What you're proposing?
You mean the specific use or ground leases more generally?
The idea of working with a developer and kind of pairing something like this, the senior center and housing?
Well, not this particular combination, but municipalities have done ground leases for recreational facilities and other uses. So, that has been done, this idea of using it, having a municipal use or municipal benefit has been done.
So, for.
But if I may, Council Holmes, I wanna remind you, again, the council would review whatever proposals, right? And all that's contained therein. And if you don't like what you see, you vote no.
I, I understand that, but time is wasted already. We can't look back, but time has already been wasted about even, you know, renovating the clubhouse. And now, we're trying to move forward with this plan, say, to my, exactly what you're saying, if we continue to just wait for something to come our way, and we say, well, we don't like this idea either, then we're just continuing to delay this. We don't have a plan in place to kind of say, yes, we are moving forward with this. So, it's in our best interest to say, we will dispose of the property based on these conditions.
That's up to you.
I think.
I have nothing to say on that matter.
I just wanna add to that, Diana, if I may. I don't think that's exactly true. What, what happens is, and we've done this before, I mean, it comes out, we're not, we're not making a decision because it's a private developer. They come back, the RFP is written, it'll have a lot of different things on it, what we're looking for, how, the idea of it. But then, their people, the people that build these kinds of things, come up with a design that they think is, one, you know, is good for them financially as well, is good for the city financially, and answers all the questions about whether it's housing or a council on aging or a recreational place, if that's what we were doing, but we're not. We're doing a council on aging. So, all those things then are in the RFP, it goes out, and they come back with the design and whatnot. The city, like usual, picks one, sends it down to us, and at that time, we might say, well, I'm not really thrilled about that. I'd like to, is there a possibility we can go back and say something to these people about rent? You know, this is what we'd like to do, or we'd like that. Gary, thank you.
Well, the only thing I'm gonna add to that is the specificity of what we're gonna come back with.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, I know you said this kinda casual, but I know you don't mean it that way. You said the city picks when they come back.
Well, right.
I know, and I say that just to make sure, let me amplify, amplify this, that it's not just a matter of, I know, that's a manner of speaking. I respect that.
I'm an person.
I know. But, Councilor Holmes, I listened to your question, those are excellent questions. And when we come back to the city, please, back to the council. You know, it's not the administration versus the council, and then there's the public out there. We're gonna come back with the most optimum, best project that we think is in the city's best interest. All your questions are definitely gonna be answered, because ultimately, I'd like to think that when we come back with that proposal, and not only with the proposal, but the reasoning why we came up, you know, with that decision, with all the optics and all the answers, we might not have all the answers, because once we dive into this with the specificity that I believe we're gonna dive into, those are gonna conjure even more questions. But please understand, as we're doing this, it isn't we versus they, we're doing this for the city's best interest. I think we've got a concept that's gonna be an elderly complex there, that's what I know right now. I think, give us the opportunity to write the RFP, let's see what's out there in terms of what they're looking at for our optics, in terms of a land use, with all those questions of, well, contracted, so. We will go into an extremely deep dive to ensure that all of these little mechanical connections are all in the city's best interest. So, we're not gonna go into anything that is in a hundred percent of the city's best interest. All I ask, on behalf of the mayor and the administration, please give us that opportunity. And I don't think you're gonna be disappointed, because ultimately, we could reject them. We may not even come back to the council. We might say, you know what, well, other than to maybe, after we look at all the proposals, just come back and say, you know what, these don't work for us, and we'll come back to you, report whether there were half a dozen, three, four, N number of proposals, present those to you, and then also explain to you why we didn't choose those. So, there isn't any guarantee that we're gonna actually come back with anything, and it's my hope that we do that. But please understand, all your questions, while they're good questions, we can't answer those now, because, for example, one example you gave is fifteen thousand square feet at fifteen dollars per square foot. You nudged that just a little bit. It just changes the overall optics of the pro forma. So, what I'd rather do is come back and give you very objective information, because otherwise, in terms of saving time, we could play with those numbers all day and just keep rolling every month after month, well, what if we tweak it here? What if we tweak it there? Well, until we get an actual development, a development team on board with their professionals that we're gonna get, that we're gonna vet out, that ultimately come down and present to you, that's the time that we're gonna speak about all these things. And who's to say that at that first presentation that we're gonna answer all your questions, or that we're gonna get through the presentation? Highly complex proposal, it's gonna take a lot of brain power to get this through, and all we're asking is to be part of that team with us so that we can go out and provide a product that's gonna really propel and project our senior population.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you, thank you. So, what is your understanding of how many apartments would need to make this profitable?
None whatsoever, Diane, Council Holmes, none at all. I don't know. So, we have a.
No apartments?
Pardon?
No apartments?
No, no, I don't know the answer to the question. I think you asked me the number of units.
Yes.
So, what I do know is what absolutes I do know. The absolutes are, A, it's in a residential zoning district, that absolute I do know. The size of the parcel of real estate, it's five point six five one acres, that I do know. It's encumbered by some buildings, it's encumbered by a parking lot. I think some questions came up about traffic. First question, one of the first questions, I challenged myself with the mayor, say, yeah, we gotta figure out how we're gonna work out that, the curve along the road. So, all of those, those are all valid questions, I'm just not in a position to answer those. So, other than the absolutes, because those are facts, everything else in terms of, and I'm just throwing these out, twenty units, forty units, sixty units, when they evaluate those proposals when they come in? And again, not choose the maximum development, we're gonna choose the optimum, the optimum development for the city. And I reassure you, look, this is Gary talking, I reassure you that we're gonna go over all those matters, all those items, all those questions in great specificity with you.
Great, thank you. So, for, in order to do this into, if there's any apartments there, what infrastructure needs need to be changed, infrastructure updates need to happen?
Good question. So, again, once the proposals are submitted, again, what I normally do with any site plan, I front that out to the fire department, to the building inspector, the water superintendent, the wastewater superintendent, the public works director, the health department, the conservation agent who works in my department and my own, and myself. So, all valid questions. So, all valid questions, we're going to ask, you know, how many flushes a day? How much water consumption per unit, depending on the type of development? And we're looking to do veteran housing and senior housing. So each, whether it's that, or any other type of development, the user, there are statistical numbers that go along with each user, it's on, it's an average, but we'll have to determine what the usage is going to be, what the consumption is going to be, what's the available pipe size or infrastructure? So to me, it's not only the infrastructure, it's the capacity, right? So you could have development that, I don't know, I'm just making this up, is the sewer line, for example. Question is, isn't so much, you know, how much they're going to generate? The question is, do we have the sufficient infrastructure in Barwick Road or Mechanic Street along that bend, or wherever we, we're going to tap off from? It could be at half capacity, it could be at a third capacity. So the question is, do we have sufficient capacity in the water line right now? I'm sorry, in the sewer line? We're going to have to calculate or determine or project the, a full build out, because the answer has to be at the full build out, not in the phasing of the construction. But a full build out is whether or not the infrastructure that's in the ground, the capacity of the pipe, could accommodate the amount of development. If it cannot, okay, if it cannot, that would be on the developer to improve those. And those are examples throughout the city, there's two at least right now before the city of Attleboro, without getting into the specifics right now, where it's incumbent upon the developer to extend the sewer. In one instance, it's a sewer line, another, in another, another instance, it's a water line. So if, if in the final analysis, we conclude that, let's say it's a sewer line, that there's insufficient capacity in terms of availability on the build, on the complete full build out, that's going to be on the developer to figure out how they're going to either put in a parallel line, or we would sit down with Mr. Hayes at that time, and work out a plan, and see if they can come up with a plan that is now then feasible for them. Because if it's not feasible for them, the developer, well, we're sure we're not going to pay for it. So again, a valid question, but we're going to have to find that out when we see what their full build out proposal is.
Diana, I'm going to ask you to wait a second and catch a few more people.
Just one more, just one more.
You just have one more? One more!
Yes, that's it. So, the RFP that we did for County Street, did, with the facade restriction, do you feel like that impacted developers, did that impact the process, the timeline, at all?
Well, sure, in, in this case, because municipalities are bound by chapter thirty B, there's a procurement process. Private development doesn't go through that procurement process. So, the CFO or CEO of a private company can say, let's go down there and do that project, they could start tomorrow. Mayor and the council doesn't have that latitude, we have to go through a procurement process. So that in and alone contributes, depending again, on the complexity of the project, an amount of time. I can't say how much in this case, but just the procurement alone would take time. In terms of the permitting, let's just say for the sake of discussion, we come back with the development, a proposed development, council's on board, we hold hands and we start moving forward, and the real estate is discharged. At that point, the permitting is the permitting is the permitting. There isn't, I don't think, any difference, because we would impose on ourselves, on the city, the same exact permitting requirements as we do on developers.
If I may, if I understood your question, Council Holmes, you may be asking whether the, the instructions, restrictions you're contemplating? Yes, the restriction on one thirty-five county, it took us years to sell that building. And I worked very closely with Council Reynolds, because I wanted to get rid of the restriction, but Sarah held firm, and we were able to get a buyer. But yeah, it delayed the process, because we had to find the right person at the right moment, who was willing to commit to keeping the facade, and to making the building, to appreciating its historic, but yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant procurement and permitting, so that's another wrinkle to it, would be such a restriction.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. I, I like the idea, I think it's a great idea, and, and I appreciate you thinking outside of the box, because right now, we're looking at fifteen million dollars, and, and I don't see how this city could possibly afford fifteen million for a council on agents. So I don't see that absolutely happening, I, I don't see how that could. We're going to see some tough times down the road, so, so time's not wasted. It's not going to be able to happen this way, we can't afford it, we got so many other things we have to do too as well. So, while you're looking outside the box, and I think it's a great idea, and I think this is the one way that we're going to be able to achieve this, and hopefully this can work out. It's only five plus acres, so we're not talking, we still got almost ninety acres, that is still a ton of land, and, and maybe there's something to ease the fear of others that could come on down, that, that could protect that land, and maybe that could ease those fears. But, like, like Gary said, it is residential, so there was talk about making it commercial. Well, if it's commercial, then you're going to get a lot more traffic than you're going to have with forty apartment houses, or whatever it might be. So, I, you know, and like I said, the RFP is going to come, it's going to be up to the council to make those decisions, and it'll be up to us to determine, hey, we like this, we don't like this, or this needs to be changed. So, we still have that flexibility. And, not to mention all the taxes that the city is going to get from that, instead of it just being a council on agent, because you're not going to get taxes from it being a council on agent, but this is another way that we're going to be able to get more taxes. So, to me, I think it's a win-win, I think it's a great idea, I wish I had thought about it. So, I appreciate you all being patient with this and looking at this, and, and I really hope this goes forward.
Thank you, Councilor Angela, thank you.
Then, then Todd, and then Jay.
Mayor, first of all, I want to say kudos to you for exploring a creative option that I think will hopefully serve to fund our senior center and serve our senior population. At the, as you're probably aware, at the public hearing, there were many questions, comments, related to the scope of the disposition, namely, lease hold versus fee simple disposition. My question is, is there any particular reason in the business that you sent down to the council that you chose not to further narrow the disposition for purposes of exploring a ground lease? Or something to that effect?
Well, in my communication, so thank you, Councilor Vares, I did, I believe I made clear in the, in my communication, I was proposing a ground...
In the communication, but in the, in the actual business?
You mean in the motion itself?
Correct.
No particular reason, you can certainly add that if you want to. Yep, no, I, you know, no particular reason at all that I can recall. Yeah. But you can certainly put that condition, that would be reasonable, because that's all I'm asking for, so yeah. Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you for, for coming down. And I had a few questions, but most of them have already been answered. One of them was regarding potential safeguards, and I appreciate the, the email from Peter Mello regarding the sunset clause, or the sundown clause. So if, if you could share that with us, that, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, we'll make copies.
The other item, I was on the council when, when we agreed to purchase Highland, and, and I remember there was a developer from Florida that was talking about...
Tampozzi.
I, I forget who the developer was.
Yes, it's the Tampozzi's.
Yes, but they were talking about building eighty-two houses, a lot of them were duplexes and stuff like that throughout the, the entire ninety acres. And one of the things that, that we talked a lot about at that time was the impact, like, how, how that wouldn't actually help us with our, our tax burden at, at that time, because a lot of these houses would have kids in the schools, and it's nine thousand dollars per child to pay for education, and that impact to us. And so, my question to you here is, is building on five acres as opposed to ninety acres, and considering senior housing here, a very different thing than what sort of we were voting on when we purchased Highland Country Club? In, in your opinion, it's, because we heard a lot from the residents saying, hey, you're going against what the council originally purchased, or agreed to, when they purchased Highland Country Club. So in your opinion, is this different than sort of what we kind of agreed to a number of years ago?
Thank you, Councilor Kovas, yes, it is both different in size, in, in nature, right? It's primarily, very likely, one building of single living folks for the most part. So it's a much lower, I guess it's a lower impact kind of development, it's condensed, it doesn't have lawns, which in light of our current situation, I'm a big fan of, it doesn't require watering anybody's lawn. And I just had another thought that, oh, it doesn't resolve, or involve the road building and all the other infrastructure, it doesn't impact our schools. And when we talk about seniors, some of these folks would still be working, they're going to have disposable income to live in the city and enjoy some of the city restaurants and other businesses. So I do think it's fundamentally different. The only commonality is housing, but housing is a broad category. So to say we want no housing is, okay, and this is housing, but it's fundamentally different from a subdivision that would have occupied the whole property, and all of that would have entailed in that particular area. Look, I'm a fan of the vote that you and your fellow, and your colleagues took at the time, I think it was in the best interest of the city. But I just think in light of the fact this area's been subdivided, it's already developed, and we're proposing an apartment building on what amounts to six or eight percent of the total land space, is in fact, in different, in spare, in nature, in size. And ultimately, again, all we're really asking for this point is just to consider the idea of what that might look like. So, yeah, so thank you for that.
Two other fairly quick questions, and Councilor Holmes touched on the first one, in, in, in asking if you were aware of similar projects in other communities, and...
Yeah.
And, and so, I'm, regardless of the land lease aspect of it, are you familiar with any other communities that have a senior center and senior housing co-located? And successes there, or, or failures, or...
One, Kelly and I went to Divisive, this was a private, though, that was a non-public property, right? Holbrook was not on public, I think it was private. But it was a senior apartment building, where they built out space on the first floor for what was supposed to be, at the time, the senior center, but the municipality wasn't occupying it when we got there. So yeah, at least one instance in this, of this particular vein. But other instances where ground leases have been done with benefits for the municipality. But yes, there's one on Holbrook, the name of which escapes me. Yep, and we went up and saw it, it was pretty cool. In fact, that's what kind of sold us on actually moving forward. I went back and forth on this, 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 I didn't wake up one day and say, I'm going to do this. It was a lot of thought and discussion, and a field trip, but when we went and saw what it could be, that solidified, like, this is an idea that at least deserves sunlight, you know, so...
Are you, is, is the Holbrook project still moving forward, or is there...
Oh, it's done, it's done, it's just that when we were there, they weren't occupying it. And I don't know if that since changed since our visit. But, yeah, at the time we went there, it was empty, and I think the town had taken a different avenue. I don't know if they're there now, I'd have to follow up, but...
And then my last question, and I think the budget director largely answered it. But, one of the things that, when I first saw the certification of free cash that immediately came to me was, hey, why don't we take a large chunk of this free cash and put this towards building a senior center, and then just bond for, for the rest of it? Or, why don't we take five million dollars and then bond for the, the rest, or six million and six, or whatever? Could we take a large chunk of that free cash and bond for it? And, and could we do that instead?
Look, we can make, of course, and we can make any decision we want, that doesn't make it the right decision, that doesn't make it a, a decision that's in the best interest of the city. So, of course we could, of course we could. I don't think it's the right thing to do, and I was hoping that Mason made that point clear, that we need to put more away in terms of reserves. And that six million dollars that you proposed to put down, is six million dollars we can't use for other improvements. So, we're buying, you know, basically, we're going to put a roof on a house, you know, that the basement is on fire. I don't know that it's the right way to go at this particular point, point in time, Councilor Kovas, but I appreciate your thinking, but I'm disinclined to do that, it is a moment.
Yes, I, just, just one comment, I mean, I think it, it still makes sense to put away money into a capital reserve for potential expenses that could come up. Again, it's subject to two-thirds vote by the council, so, you know, say we have two mil, right now we have two mil, over two million dollars set aside, which the original intention was for this purpose. There could be FFNE costs for furnishing a place, or other, you know, reasons to utilize those funds later. But if not, it's still subject, if we want to use it for other capital, it's still subject to the council approval. So if the determination at such time is, there's no longer a need for those funds, they can be used for another purpose. But I, I would just say, in terms of, you know, some of the projects that are not just the big projects we're talking about down the road, there's other projects in, in front of us, like the Koella Roof Project, the Thatcher Roof and Skylight System. We're talking about, between those two projects alone, it's probably ten million dollars, and there's no palette, we've checked in with the MSBA, there's no palette for MSBA participation in those right now, given the fact that we just got a two hundred and fifty-nine million dollar high school, and, you know, the requirements, they've recently changed the requirements around roofs. So, those are two projects that are right on our doorstep, and, you know, again, I think the analogies, that's a useful analogy in this context, it's, it's not a zero-sum game, but let's be honest, like, there's, you know, we have to make really calculated decisions, and, and if we're, you know, in your own home, you wouldn't go buy a vacation home if you needed a new roof on your primary home, right? And, like, I know that's a tough analogy, but, again, like, if we have, you know, we have about thirty-five buildings in the city, if the usable life is twenty-five to thirty years, you're going to replace a roof every single year. Those are things we know are coming, they're here on our doorstep, and there's more coming right after those. So, it's a balancing act. So I think it's important to continue to put funds away into capital stabilization, in general stabilization, and, you know, like, ultimately, that could defray the cost of any borrowing or any capital project, but we still have to make determinations on what, what's most valuable to the city.
Excellent, that concludes my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Councilor Vares is before me.
You may, I already went.
He went, he went, he went first.
All right, so Mayor, thanks again for coming down and answering these questions.
I apologize, I apologize if I offended you, that wasn't the intent of my comment.
Mayor, it's nice to see you, thank you for coming down this evening. I do agree that this is not a concept new to Attleboro, I mean, new, it's just new to Attleboro, so it's going to raise a lot of questions. Gary, hearing Gary talk a lot about the concept, you know, right now, we're being asked to vote on a disposition with a, a little bit of a concept. I would feel better, Chair Reynolds, if we could have some kind of a non-binding concept in front of us to help us conceptualize this a little bit better, which would take into some of the concerns that we had, you know, almost, I'd say, probably estimating twelve to thirteen people come speak against us, taking a concern, some of their, taking into consideration some of their concerns. Talked about the infrastructure, I think that's really important, you know, like, where do we stand now? What can our existing infrastructure handle? And I, I appreciate, Gary, what you said about the flushes, I think that's a really big deliberating factor. If housing fails, how does that jeopardize the potential of the senior center? I think overwhelmingly, the, the thoughts were, senior center there, most people are in favor of. There's been some talk about the traffic, especially with those cross-country meets, which I think the cross-country meets, what a great way to say, hey, Attleboro's here, we have the Big East Championship, that's nothing to scoff at here, every year, every other year, not to mention the high school invitationals. I would like to get some of those more, again, non-binding concepts of what it is that we're looking for, potentially, how many apartments could we handle? What does, what can we handle, what can't we? Because just saying, yeah, we're going to put this out for disposition without fully understanding, I think we have an idea, but if there's a way we could get some kind, and maybe we can't, I don't know. But if we could get some kind of a non-binding concept to get an understanding of exactly what it is that the administration's asking for us. The other thing, there's been a lot of talk about the other, you know, ninety-three acres, give or take. I know, less than two years ago, I introduced business for, studying investigation for chapter ninety-seven, which I know Councilor Reynolds has been doing a lot of research, this isn't a chapter ninety-seven piece of things. He's been doing a lot of research on that, and I know this isn't something that we want to just jump into. I think there's a lot of moving pieces when we look at this. So, I'm intrigued, but I'm also want to be very cognizant of the concerns raised by the neighbors especially.
Yeah, if I may, I can endeavor to answer some of your questions, but I'm not a developer. I can't tell you how many apartments I need to squeeze in to make, you know what I mean, to get my money back, so. I don't know, I'm not a developer, so...
I'm not asking for it right now, Mayor, without, right?
No, but I know you said you wanted more of a visual...
A conceptual idea of what it is that you're looking at. And again, I don't know if it's, if it's possible, but just kind of to give us some kind of a vision, I think we all have, you know, different ideas.
What I'm envisioning would be one building...
Excuse me, let me just, let me just hang on here for a minute. I'm going to ask right now if my own committee is comfortable bringing this out, I am. Laurie, are you comfortable bringing it out of committee?
Well, I don't know how to answer that question now with the, the comment from President Filippo.
I understand, I understand his, his comment. I think we've heard from everybody practically, the, and we've heard a million questions, and we have heard from Gary, the protections that we have. I, I would like to take this out, if you are not, if you two are not comfortable voting it out... voting it out, let me know.
Should we wait for the idea that?
I, I don't, I personally, and I've been on this committee a long time, I don't believe it's going, you're asking for something that we already know that Laura has it down there. If, if we don't like it, it comes off. We already know that. That's in place. We know that we've heard all kinds of information from Gary, and, and so that's, I'm, I'm putting it out there, because we can say no twice already after this. This is just bringing it out, letting them get moving forward. I'm, I'm asking my committee if you are willing to bring this out. Yes or no?
I'd be willing to bring it out so that everybody else can.
That's all I care. I'm not asking any more things. I'm, I'm going to call it out. That's what I'm doing.
I am not.
No. No. I'm not asking anymore. I think we've gone through it. We've done a ton of stuff. Everybody's had more than ample time to ask questions. I'm going to bring it out. You can start the process if it comes out, whatever, and we'll be able to turn it up or turn it down as we move forward. I, I think that we could talk it to death, and we could be into it till another year from today. I think we've answered almost every question. So with further ado, I am going to bring it out.
We're done, Council Reynolds?
I think you are. Yes. From the docket of September 17th, I entertain, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the proposal to declare the 5.496 acre parcel identified as the Assessors' Plat number 115, Lot number 1B, a portion of Highland Park with a current assessed value of $977,400 as surplus and available for disposition for leasing.
It doesn't say that.
I, yeah, I'm amending it. For leasing, I'm adding the for leasing amendment, because we just talked about it. So, Council Tavares, I've, I've added that several times. Councilor Tavares asked about it tonight. That is exactly what was asked for when the mayors came down here and gave us the information, how it did end up here. But that's what it's for, for leasing.
I would, I would say for ground lease.
For ground lease. Okay. For ground lease. Thank you, Mr. Cobus. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Thank you. That motion passes. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to accept the generous donation of gift cards totaling $650 from the Holiday Spirit Committee to the Outreach Office of the City of Attleboro. Second. Thank you. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. All those in favor?
Aye.
From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to declare the following: Park and forestry equipment is surplus and available for disposition. One Rico Copier MP 2553, number 00435, condition very poor. Second. Thank you. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to declare the following: Election office equipment is surplus and available for disposition. One Brother Fax Machine, model number IN, Intel, FAX 2820. It's poor. It's unworking. Second. Thank you. Again, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Any other concerns or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. From the docket of October 1st, 2024, I entertain a motion to accept a land donation from Tom McNulty, shown as Assessors' Plat 164, Lot 1AP off Cathedral Drive. Any questions or concerns? This, this donation is right down the end of Cathedral Drive. Any concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is all the Business City Property and Claims has this evening. I would like to adjourn at 8:54. Thank you. Then I will call the IT and Infrastructure Committee to order at 8:54. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to transfer $320 from account 11331000-530101, Budget and Administration Professional Services, to account 11331000-578020, Budget and Administration Previous Year's Bills, to pay a fiscal year 24 invoice to Sensible Computer.
Second.
Thank you. This is to pay for an Outlook connector for email services. The connector was supplied to the city at May 31st, 2024. So it's just, you know, property received. Any questions or concerns about this motion? Hearing none. I call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That completes the Business and the IT and Infrastructure Committee this evening. I move to adjourn at 8:55.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call to order the License Committee at 8:56. I have four motions for the evening. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the following two Class 2 renewal applications. Try County, sorry, Try Town Auto Sales at 1850 County Street for four customer parking spaces and six display spaces, and Blue and White Motors, Inc., at 1815 County Street for four parking spaces and 15 display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. So I'll just comment on all four. One of them's going to be a double, but they were all under their numbers in terms of what they're allotted now. Everything was in order for all the ones I'm bringing out tonight. And that's why I'm bringing them out. The other ones, I'll still visit or make sure they're in order at the time. So, hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Brooke. Thanks. Just a suggestion, if you could just touch base with Virginia, let her know which ones you're not bringing out.
Yes, I, I just marked them all here. So hopefully she's, I tried to do different colors, too.
Very good. Thank you.
And I was in aye, so that's three, zero. Motion passes.
Look, I didn't say aye yet. You got three now.
Motion passes. Thank you. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the Class 3 auto renewal application from Try Town Auto, 1850 County Street, for four customer parking spaces and six display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Again, same previous sentiment, but I'll open the floor if anyone has anything else. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to approve the Class 1 auto renewal application from Just Trailers, Inc., 1863 County Street for four 12, for 12 customer parking spaces and seven display spaces.
Second.
Thank you. Again, same thing for, any comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and I would call for an adjournment at 8:58.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
I'd like to call Public Works Committee to order at 8:59. I have one item this evening. This is regarding ordinance changes for the water fees. So it's relatively long, so I'll try to get through it quick. From the docket of November 5th, 2024. Just regard. Well, hey, look at that. The Public Works Committee has no business. Cancelled.
Don't hear that, Al.
Oh, you know what? I, I start, so I'm called for adjournment at 8:59.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
I'll call Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee to order at 8:59. Myself, Council of Roy, and Council Angelo. I have one motion this evening. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I entertain a motion to transfer $42,302.55 from account Citywide Reserve Bank for transfer to the account at least earned time.
Second.
Thank you. We did, I don't know if you received a letter for backup communication, but it's basically just to request for the transfer of funds and for, it's for earned fine payment. It's just a contractual expense. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We attend at 9:00.
We have no business with personnel, Veterans and Human Services Committee as of our occasion. I call for a meeting at the next appropriate time. Conversation classification. We, I call, we have no business at this moment, but I call for a meeting on October 30th, on Wednesday. It will be meeting at the high school at 6:00 PM.
As a matter of clarification, is that a committee meeting?
It's a committee meeting.
At 6:00 PM.
And the mayor, the mayor is going to be speaking. HR's going to be speaking, and Mason Lord will be speaking. Possibly Deb Gould. There'll be Wednesday, the day after, yeah, at the high school.
At the high school.
Yeah, there'll be an email coming out for the exact room.
Council, it's in the room where the school committee holds the meeting.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I call the Transportation and Traffic Committee together at 9:01. And I have one item of business this evening. And I hope you have the correct, I have this slightly changed. Do you have, you have the first, well, let me read it and make sure you have it. You all got it. From the docket of November 5th, 2024, I make a motion to install a new stop sign at Jefferson and Fifth Street, creating a three-way stop. And thank you. And let me make a, your quizzical, Laura.
No, you continue, and then maybe this look will go away.
I thought you were about to ask a question.
Well, you, you read the motion. She seconded it, but isn't this going the traffic study? Or is it not going to traffic study, since it's been a traffic study? That's why I wasn't sure why it was seconded when you made the motion.
So, can I explain that? Okay. So the, the motions for stop signs basically goes, goes straight to the Chief of Police.
Okay.
And that's why I made the motion, because I've already talked with the chief.
Okay.
And in my opinion, I'd like to do this sooner rather than later. And I'll explain. So if to visualize Jefferson Street, it's coming out of Dennis, and it's on the, at the intersection of Athburn Willard and Dennis and Jefferson. So, and there are, you go down six or seven houses, I didn't count how many, and there's a three-way, there's a three-way intersection. And if you continue straight, straight, a little to the left, but mostly straight, and you go up the hill, and that's still Jefferson. If you take the right turn, that's Fifth Street, right?
Mm-hmm.
So they both have a stop sign coming towards that three-way intersection. You come down that hill, there's a stop sign. You come up to that three-way intersection on Fifth, there's a stop sign. You go down Jefferson, there is no stop sign. I went there for an hour on Friday and watched what traffic was doing between 2:30 and 3:30, which I thought was probably a somewhat of a high-traffic time, because there's, there's traffic coming from the high school at that time. And what I noticed is that the traffic coming on down Fifth Street all stopped completely and take their turn right or left. The same thing with Jefferson coming down that hill. They completely stopped. What I, there is a sign that Mike Tyler put up saying, within the last 10 days, saying that it's a dangerous intersection. He put it up maybe two houses before you reach that three-way intersection. And what I noticed is that didn't seem to affect any of the traffic that was coming down. They weren't necessarily speeding, but what I did notice was, because you don't put up stop signs for speeding. There got to be other reasons. And that's what the chief has told me. What I noticed is that most of the traffic coming down Jefferson was taking a wide turn when they were turning right and actually going into the far side of the road on Fifth. And thank God, nobody was ever coming down that road. And maybe one out of every four or five vehicles would slow down enough to just make a simple turn and stay on the right side of Fifth. Most of them did not. And when I shared this this morning with the chief, I asked him if we could put a stop sign there, and he agreed. And we don't make those decisions unless he agrees to them. So I wanted to bring it up tonight. Is Council of Roy here?
So I, I'd like to do some additional research on this. It's been a while since we've added a stop sign.
Sure.
But adding a stop sign is a change to the ordinance, which means we need to have a public hearing. So maybe we can hold this for a couple of weeks.
That's fine. I appreciate that.
Because I want to ensure that we're doing it the right way, because this will change.
It's been a while, I think.
Yeah, it has been. I believe it would change Section 10-4. So I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way.
Fine. Any idea when, or you'll let us?
You, you and I can talk about that.
Sure. Sure. Absolutely. So I will withdraw the motion for the time being, and
You'll need the second to be withdrawn.
Remove second.
Thank you. And I will call, I'll make a motion that we close the meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That is all the Business Traffic and Transportation Committee has this evening.
Ordinances, Elections, and Legislative Matters is canceled for this evening, as well as the Special Committee on Traffic.
Pam, would you want to cancel?
The Special Committee on Rules and Procedures is canceled.